And now I'd like to call to order the November 29th, 2017 formal city council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Stark. Councilwoman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pastore.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Thank you. I would like to introduce our interpreter Judy Holm.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy interprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
And I have city comments, Leonard Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Leonard Clark, born right here in Phoenix, Arizona, 53 years ago. Thank you for letting me speak into all the veterans, whether they be conservative, liberal, whatever they are, they're Americans, and I appreciate the fact that they served and some that are not here, so that folks like myself can speak. This did not come with no costs. Thank you. I am concerned because in the news, I've heard that in like City of Chicago, they've signed non-disclosure agreements with the federal government, the police department, and the city government there to utilize drones from the federal government. And I believe that our Fourth Amendment right to privacy, of course, should be observed under the United States Constitution, although I know many are giving up on it. I'm concerned that the Phoenix Police Department, under the leadership of the leaders, which would be you, are allowing secret agreement with the federal government and Homeland Security to use drones, as the Chicago Police Department is using, to spy on its citizens without warrants. Also, the stingray device, which is now, before the Supreme Court, police have signed non-disclosure agreements, an addition, I believe, New York City Police Department. Basically, these are devices the IRS was using to monitor your phones, mobile spy devices. The government is lending those stingray devices to police departments. I feel that whether you're conservative, liberal, whatever you are, that your first duty should be to the United States Constitution and our Fourth Amendment. Yes, we have enemies that want to destroy us, but we should not destroy our Constitution in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next speaker is Greta Rogers.
My name is Greta Rogers. I received a couple of weeks ago from the city manager and the city attorney, the Burton Bar Library update and outcomes dated 10/27/17. I'm sure each one of you has received this report, and if you haven't, request it immediately. This is a travesty. It's appalling. It's inexcusable, the event that necessitated this report. It was totally preventable. Three people allegedly, as of this writing, had been fired. There are probably four more, who should be. One person who can't be, had already retired after the fact, but before the event. So, but before the report, excuse me, he was there during the event. This is appalling, and it speaks to a very critical lack in City of Phoenix managing and operating. People who didn't report, didn't report to the city manager. This was not a leaky faucet, or a toilet that wouldn't seal after flush. This was a major safety component in the library, as we have in this building and in all public buildings since before World War II, for heaven's sakes. Wasn't reported. This is inexcusable, and I urge you, Mr. Valenzuela, I'm going to ask you personally, to put together a management review task force to go over city operation, management, procedures, and processes, so that nothing like this ever happens again. This is business school 101, and I know what I'm talking about because I've gone to business school and beyond, way beyond 101. Ed has been quoted on the news and in the papers saying this is going to cost 10 million bucks. Ed doesn't know any more than I know what it's going to cost. The last time I talked to him, the bids hadn't all come in. And the insurance, he said, will pay for it. We are self-insured, you're self-insured, we're self-insured because we, the taxpayers, pay the money to be self-insured. That is a crass remark. I don't ever want anything like this to happen in a building in this city where the public is allowed to come and go freely during open hours. And it is upon the shoulders of each of you to see that this is completely researched and never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you, Greta.
Vice Mayor, Ms. Rogers is largely correct, and I have a series of processes underway right now, doing what she has suggested, which is a management review, particularly of our buildings and our life safety systems.
Thank you. Stephen Ramirez. It's on.
Thank you, it's good to be here. As a person with cerebral palsy, I can't drive, so I rely heavily on Dial-A-Ride Paratransit Services to get to work and social activities. While I'm very grateful to taxpayers for subsidizing Dial-A-Ride, there are several big problems with the way the service operates. In her August 7th story, Arizona Republic reporter Maria Paletta summarized the difficulties many customers have faced since Valley Metro introduced changes to Dial-A-Ride on July 1st. Extreme hold times, extended travel times, botched pickups, confused drivers. And I quote, "I wish I could tell you things were great before July 1st, but they weren't," she says. Due to being busy with school, work, and sleep, imagine having to always schedule your ride at least 24 hours in advance. Imagine having drivers often show up 20 minutes late. Imagine always having to travel with other passengers and divert to their destinations, even when you're running one hour late for work. The earliest you may book your trip is one day to two weeks in advance. Until about three years ago, I simply accepted the level of service Dial-A-Ride was providing, but then I started volunteering with Americans for Prosperity, based here in Phoenix, Arizona, to make sure I get to volunteer events on time. The staffers at AFP would sometimes bring me there and send me home on Uber and Lyft ride-sharing services. For that, I am deeply grateful, and I thank God for the service they provide for me all the time. The differences between ride-sharing and Dial-A-Ride are like night and day. Rather than scheduling 24 hours in advance, I can choose a destination and have a driver show up within 10 minutes. Rides that would take me an hour and a half on Dial-A-Ride now take me 20 minutes. Best of all, the rideshare drivers are usually very customer-focused. Some of them even play rock and metal music on their stereos for me via Sirius XM radio. My rideshares rides typically cost about half of $23 national average cost of providing a single paratransit ride, according to its 2017 budget book. The City of Phoenix had a budget of over $18 million for Dial-A-Ride, excluding administrative cost of roughly 400,000 Dial-A-Rides, and Dial-A-Ride's estimated 323,000 hours of service cost over 55 an hour. Or, using Dial-A-Ride's estimate of 348,500 boardings in fiscal year 2016, that's still over $50 per boarding. A majority of the people who use Dial-A-Ride do not need wheelchair-accessible vehicles. They could easily be served by getting unique Uber and Lyft codes, and codes from any other qualifying competitors from the City of Phoenix. People who are visually impaired, or who do not have smartphones, could call a phone number to have a dispatcher access the unique codes to set up the rideshare. Comparing the current Dial-A-Ride cost of over $50 per boarding to the Uber and Lyft shares for my normal destinations, I estimate that the reform could allow me to triple the number of rides at the same cost of taxpayers. The good news is, for people who really do need wheelchair-accessible vehicles, is that Dial-A-Ride is, Dial-A-Ride's existing fleet of accessible vehicles would then be freed up to focus exclusively on customers who need that service. But the ride-sharing may be able to revolutionize the wheelchair-accessible market as well. Uber and Lyft both have wheelchair-accessible vehicles in their networks around several cities across the country, which include Boston, Washington, San Francisco, and Chicago. Having looked at contract, have all looked at contracting with rideshare services, by paying a negotiated price per ride or per mile to competing rideshare companies, the City of Phoenix could guarantee that drivers of accessible vehicles will be online when they're needed. If it needs to find money for those subsidies, the City of Phoenix could simply double my rides, rather than triple my rides, and plow savings into stronger in sensities of ride-sharing services for accessible vehicles. I would like to thank the Phoenix City Council members for thinking about the possibility of reforming Dial-A-Ride through the use of ride-sharing, and thanks to market competition of innovative technology and ride-sharing that could end up being greater mobility and greater convenience for disabled people in Phoenix. And it's time to get Dial-A-Ride in the 21st century.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ramirez. Maria Hyatt, who's our Transportation Director, is back there. She wants to talk to you more. I think it's a great idea, and thank you for bringing up, we do a little bit with taxis already, but expanding that to ride-sharing is a great idea, and you may have just bought yourself a seat on the Citizens Transportation Commission for that good idea, so be careful, be careful. You may have just signed up.
Thank you.
Thank you for that well-researched paper and your testimony. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you so much. I've been waiting for this for a long time. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Gail Palmer, did you have issues on, for citizen comment unrelated, I see you're here for another item as well, so if you could keep it to items unrelated to the agendized item.
I think I am. Two weeks ago, I brought this to your attention, Mr. Mayor and Council, about a great citizen, Bev Harvey Koenig, her passing. Her memorial service is Friday, I'm sorry, it is November, I'm on the wrong line, please forgive me. Her memorial service celebration of life will be held on December the 2nd of 17, at 1710 West Orangewood, Phoenix, Arizona, at 11:00 a.m., and it'll go till about 3:00 p.m. I would like to say a couple of things about Bev Harvey, if I could. She was a giant. I run on tour, met her about 25 years ago. She had started the clout association, very active, from Indian School North to Dunlap, Freeway West to, I think, 35th or 43rd. She really made our neighborhood considerably better. One of the highlights of her career as an activist, she paired up with Jack Kaiser, and Jack Kaiser and Bev worked together tirelessly for years, but their greatest accomplishment, many of us think, was the Little Canyon Trail. And I would like to have the help of the council and you, Mr. Mayor, to figure out how we could put a plaque up and dedicate it to their honor and memorial service on that trail. And there's been many people in the neighborhood have thought about the same thing. We'd like to memorialize that and try to keep that trail open to the public from now on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that testimony in honor of Bev, who's a great leader with the Canyon Corridor. Please send that in write, the request in write, I think it's a great suggestion, and we'd like to do it. I'd like to do it. That's a great idea. All right, I think we have one more card before we begin our formal meeting agenda. Robert McGowan, Mr. McGowan? Yeah, wow.
You're such a rebel.
You haven't seen anything yet. Sometimes it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. Yeah, I'm here to talk about your risk management division and my experiences as a consumer, since this is the city council and the mayor's office. You are the guys who, you know, represent, you know, the guys like me who are out in the community, who are paying taxes and who are benefiting from city services, so I thought you might need to hear this story. Last May, I was driving through the streets of Phoenix on my way to see an old friend. I hadn't seen in a while, and as I was traveling up 7th Avenue, making a turn onto Coronado, I was rear-ended by a big pickup truck. Well, this big pickup truck was driven by a nice undercover Phoenix police officer, who said that, "Don't worry about anything, it was my fault, I got distracted, my clipboard fell on the floor, and I reached down to grab it, and I'm sorry, I ran into your car." Yeah, he did. And he was very nice, and all the hordes of policemen that came to the scene afterwards were all very nice, very nice guys. And they called an ambulance, and the paramedics came out and checked me out, and so forth and so on, and I thought, this is going to be a cakewalk. You know, obviously, he's admitting that it was his fault. Said that risk management was going to be a no-sweat proposition, it was all going to be fine, my car would be taken care of, I would be taken care of, and that was great. Well, you know, I'm a man of very few needs. I don't need a whole lot, but when I do need something, I expect to get it. What I got from the risk management was a big, giant runaround that is still going on to this day. At first, you know, I called Risk Management and said, "Well, they told me to call you guys to get this thing started," so they sent me a questionnaire. And part of the questionnaire asked me, you know, how much was it going to cost to repair my car, what were my medical costs, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't have any idea how much it would cost to repair my car. I'm not an appraiser. I didn't involve my personal insurance because, you know, it wasn't my fault, it was the admitted City of Phoenix's fault. So I thought that they could come up with a number. What was it going to cost for medical care? Well, I don't know, I'd just been to a chiropractor once, the day of the accident, pretty much because I have a daughter who's a chiropractor in Albuquerque, and she insisted that I do something. So I didn't know what the cost was going to be, and, you know, what did I want in terms of pain and suffering? I didn't have any clue, I didn't really want anything, I just wanted the situation to be, to be made whole. Well, we waited and waited and waited and waited and waited, and nothing happened, so I gingerly called back. I don't like to call back people and harass them, but, well, you know, we don't have any, we sent you out this questionnaire, you sent it back, and you put zeros on these questions, or question marks is what I put, and, you know, we don't know how to proceed. Well, the car is in a, somebody's shop where we were told to take it, and I assumed that you were going to send an appraiser out to take a look at it. Well, no, it took forever to get an appraiser to come out and see the car. And then I got additional runarounds because the manager of the claim couldn't talk to the people that I was buying the car from, because they weren't me. Well, it took some doing, but I finally got them on the same page, yeah.
It's a three-minute limit, and I've given you...
Here's the thing, you know, I'm still being jacked around, I'm being told that it's all been submitted to the council, I'll hear after the next council meeting, and council meetings have come and gone, and nobody has got back...
I think our city manager may have some information.
Mayor members of the council, item 18 today, is a settlement of claim with Mr. Robert McGowan. It is on the council agenda today.
Well, praise God.
It hasn't passed yet.
On what?
It hasn't passed yet, so wait till...
Okay.
Praise God yet.
Or praise God now and then.
Okay. And if that, you know, but let's see what's come to pass. I've not had any, I've not agreed to anything, I've never, I've never had anybody approach me with a number, but if that's the case, great.
Maybe in the meantime, before the vote, we can get with Mr. McGowan. Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next on the agenda is our city clerk, will read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G6384 and 6385, S44044, 44048, 44063, 44065, 44066, and S44072 through S44115, and resolutions number 21590 through 21592, and 21595 through 21598.
Thank you so much. There are no minutes to be approved today. How about boards and commission nominations? Is there a motion on mayor, board, and commission nominations?
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commissions nominations.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. City Council Board and Commission nominations?
Motion to approve city council boards and commissions nominations.
There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. It appears to be citizens here to be sworn in for service. We appreciate that very much, so I'll come down to the floor, and we'll swear you in, and then if afterwards, come behind the dais, so individual council members can thank you in advance for your service to the citizens of Phoenix. All right, so everybody, please raise your right hand, aye, and state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of, according to the best of my ability. So help me God. You're official. Thank you for your service in advance. All right, thank you in advance for your service to the citizens of Phoenix. Next on the agenda will be liquor license applications. Vice Mayor, is there an omnibus as it relates to liquor license applications?
Motion to approve items 3 through 11, except 3, 7, and 11.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any cards on those items?
Vice Mayor, can you pull number 10 out?
Yes, we can. We'll hold out 10 for now.
Okay.
There's a motion, there is a second. Cards, just one in favor. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next will then be number 3, is that right? Number 3 is a liquor license application as it relates to Deep Roots Brewing. This was continued from a previous agenda, is that correct? Councilman Noakowski, do you have comments, or how do you want to handle the matter we have? Let's see.
Cards, Mayor.
There is one card. Stephen Eldridge, are you the applicant? Yeah, you came last time as well. So the applicant's here, and in favor, obviously. Don Eldridge, also the applicant, in favor, not wishing to speak. And then Mike McQuade, who's not, not wishing to speak, opposed to this item. Councilman.
Mayor, I met with the applicant and Cass and some other individuals that do services at the homeless campus, and some of the issues that they had about having a homeless shelter, and the issues of having a alcohol element in that area, some of the concerns that they had were the parking, the safety of the patrons going to the, to the business, and one of the things that I was concerned about is that the City of Phoenix has really created all these different programs, you know, Phoenix Cares, we have police officers that are out there patrolling, you know, especially Tito and Vena, who's out there as our community action officers, that are on a daily basis working with these organizations to help the individuals sleeping out there on the streets. So a big concern I have is that there are some stipulations that the applicant said that he's okay with, but we as a city can't actually implement in a liquor license, which is basically the parking and also the not actually selling alcohol at the premise and having a bar there until the light rail is actually present down Jefferson or Washington in the future. So saying all... down Jefferson or Washington in the future. So saying all this, I really like to make a motion for no recommendation at this time and let them settle this at the state level.
Okay. So the motion is for no recommendation. Is there a second from this council?
Second.
There's a second from this council. And as the public knows, when it comes to liquor licenses, not for special events, but for bar, restaurant, this body is only a recommending body. When they're smart, the liquor board listens to us, but they don't always listen to us with our recommendation. So this doesn't have a substantive impact on the recommendation, only to say that because of the challenges that this bar may post to the nearby campus, the councilman has said, "Look, we're not going to make a recommendation. Let the state liquor board deal with it." Staff recommendation is in favor or not opposed to the item. Same with the police recommendation. It's the unique circumstances of how close it is to our homeless shelter. I actually support the council. I think that's the right recommendation under these unique circumstances. Any other comments by members of this council? So the motion is no recommendation. Roll call. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. So that item will now move for the liquor board. They'll have a full hearing for the liquor board, and that will be the final decision-making entity for this license. Thank you so much. Thanks, Councilman. All right. Next on the agenda is item seven. Item seven is the vice mayor's district.
So-
Dirty's Bar.
I am making the motion of no recommendation.
The recommendation on this one is also for no recommendation. Let's see, we have, and there's a second on that. There are a couple cards. One is Mr. Gard, the applicant. And then Mr. McKenzie, who's with the applicant. Any testimony you want to provide, please? Up to two minutes?
Yes, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, Your Honor. This is one where the only issue is the applicant. It's not the location or the type of business. It's whether he's capable, qualified, and reliable. There's no protests of him filed. He has no criminal record. The police did not object to him. The staff recommended approval. He's a college graduate of ASU. He's been a professor at Maricopa County Community Colleges. He's had that intense background search that they do with him. He's had no issues, no background issues. He's taken the basic liquor and management. He's got real estate experience. He's got retail experience. He's hired a qualified staff, Evan McKenzie, and a few others who have many years in this area, and they have no serious problems. And we would request that the city council recommend approval on the basis of the special-
Thank you very much. And you are, of course, David Dow, the attorney for the applicant.
And I'm sorry, David Dow, the attorney for the applicant. I tried to speak fast. 3104, he's camelback.
Fair enough. All right. So Representative the applicant is suggesting that the motion should be in favor of the liquor license for Dirty's Bar. The motion is for no recommendation to a second. Does anyone want to change? Anyone else constitute to write testimony on this item? Any comments by members of this council? Roll call. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. So no recommendation passes seven to one. Next item on the agenda is item number 10. Item number 10 is a special event liquor license for ballet folklorical. We are the final decision-maker on special event liquor licenses. Councilman Noakowski.
Yes. Is somebody here from Food City? Could they please stand up? What I just want to do, Mayor, is I just wanted to point out Food City, all the great stuff that they do for our community. On Thanksgiving, for the last 24 years, we've been having a Thanksgiving meal out at the McDonald's on Central and Southern. This year, the individuals sold the McDonald's, and Food City stepped up to the plate to make sure that those families continue to receive a Thanksgiving breakfast. And they served over 3,000 meals. Myself, and I know council member Valenzuela was there, to support Food City and all their outreach to the community. And I just want to thank you for everything you do in the community. And I know that this liquor license is actually for a tamale festival that's going to be out here on the, I think it's the 10th and 11th, 9th and 10th, out here in front of City Hall. So if you love tamales, if you want to try out tamales, it's all the different church groups and nonprofit organizations have a booth, and you can try out all the different types of tamales that we have in the city of Phoenix. So once again, thank you, Food City, for everything you do for our community. With that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license.
There's a motion to approve the liquor license. Is there a second? There is a motion. There is a second. Any additional comments by members of this council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That liquor license passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, item number 11, Pink Bunnies. Councilwoman Gallego, what'd you like to do?
Pink Bunnies is in District 8, and we've received comments from the neighborhood, including they have concerned about that this license has not been in active use for adult use for more than 180 days. They have asked us to look into that. And then, for other reasons, I wanted to move for disapproval of this liquor license based on several concerns, including neighborhood protests about granting another liquor license at this location. This license is not needed and does not contribute to the current positive economic and real estate growth of the area. Therefore, I don't suppose an additional liquor license in the area. Second.
There's a motion for denial. There's a second. Are there cards on this item, on item 11? No cards on this item. Any additional comments by members of this council? Roll call. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. The motion denied passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is ordinances, resolutions, new business, and items on the planning and zoning agenda. Vice mayor, do you want to move a couple items up?
I did. Items 51, 78, 79, and 80.
So there's a motion to take those items out of order. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Could you repeat that for our city clerk?
51, 78, 79, 80.
That didn't matter.
Okay. Doesn't matter. I know. Do we need to do-
All right. So the request has been we do consent first. We should only take a moment and then take them out of order. I apologize. Let's do consent first.
So we're ready, right? Chris? Okay. Motion to approve items 12 through 92, except the following. 13, 26, 13, 26, 27, 48, 52, and 85 through 92. Item 44 has been revised and excluding these items for public comment. 51, 54, 62, 76, 78 through 80, 85 through 87, and 92. I think I missed one.
14, 25.
14 and 25.
Okay.
Trying to read from two. Okay. Card on 54 was just withdrawn.
Will include 54 in the omnibus?
On the omnibus. Okay.
So that's the motion. Is there a second on the omnibus motion?
Second. I made the motion. Sorry. Sorry. I'm just trying to move.
That's all right. Move quick. All right. So we got a motion. We have a second. Are there any cards on those items then? Any comments by members of our council? Roll call. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Those items pass unanimously. Now we'll do the motion to take items out of order.
I would like to move items 51, 78, 79, and 80.
Let me include 76.
And 76. To take them out of order.
Second.
Motion is a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So the next item will be 51. Is there a motion on 51?
Motion to-
Move to approve item 51.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in favor of 51. There's a second. Are there any cards on those items? That item, excuse me.
There's several.
All right. There are a few cards here. Obviously, the motion is in favor. Some cards are marked to speak only if necessary. I'll let you decide if it's necessary. How about Maria Spellen? Did you wish to provide testimony, or is the motion in your favor? Are you okay? You're fine. Okay. Abe Arvizu? You got it? Okay, good. Liz Arvizu? Did you provide testimony? You're okay with the motion? All right. Our card is marked in favor. Get it for the record. Also in favor is William Kusumain, I apologize, and then Abe Arvizu Jr. How about Patrick Gurul? You're neutral. Did you provide testimony for this council on the motion? The motion's in favor. Patricia, excuse me. Patricia Gurul?
Patricia.
Thank you. Please come forward and up to two minutes of testimony.
Good afternoon, Mayor Stanton. I'm Patricia Gurule. Good afternoon, council members. Cultural heritage is what keeps us attached to our religion and our traditions and our beliefs. It plays a very important role in one's life because Phoenix is a relatively new city. Compared to other large cities, a meaningful effort to preserve our limited historic resources are especially important and worthy of serious consideration. We continue to work towards maintaining the rich culture of this area. We feel that the Father Albert Braun OFM Veterans Memorial District proposal is the antithesis that enables us to achieve this goal. Thus, we request that the Phoenix City Council approve the November 15, 2017 amendments to the Father Albert Braun OFM Veterans Memorial District Proposal Land Reuse Final Report, Appendix 1, Phase 1, be included as an integral part of item number 51 amendment to the Sky Harbor Center Redevelopment Area Boundary, Resolution 21595. And I have a submittal for you.
Thank you much. City clerk will receive that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. There are a couple cards indicating right now not wishing to speak. If you do, I'll give you the opportunity now. Mr. Bill Baker, did you wish to speak on this item? Mr. Baker is opposed to the item and felt that its discriminatory to privately-owned properties within the redevelopment area and that there was no public hearing was held for this change in the plan. Mary Russell, did you provide testimony for this council? Mary's also opposed to the item and felt that it was an unfair process and that it needs a more due process before we vote. Does anyone else here wish to provide testimony on item number 51? Going once, going twice? Okay. The motion is in favor. There is a second. I'll now turn to members of the council. Any testimony or comments by members of our council? Roll call.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. That item passes eight to zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 76. Item number 76 is an item on our planning and zoning agenda. It concerns a final plat for the southeast corner of Missouri Avenue and 31st Avenue. This is in Councilman Valenzuela's district. Councilman, do you want to make a motion, put it on the floor, and then we'll see if the comments can relate to that motion?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Mr. Gail Palmer, did you wish to provide testimony on item 76?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Is this on? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. There's a couple. I think probably all of you up here in the front, the councilman and the mayor, probably know all of this. But there's something I think that the audience should know and the people watching television, is talking about these abandonments. GCU is paying such a, they've, let me just say, they started getting ownership of these properties in the, this two large city blocks back in '14. They paid as little as $10.75 a foot. They've paid as much as $68.42 a square foot in 2016. And there's a range from there back and forth, or up and down from that low figure to the high. But the thing that appalls me is the price that they're having to pay for the city's street abandonments. It's less than $4 a square foot compared to these others. We talk about and hear about how desperate the city is for monies, but it seems like they're giving away a lot of the public lands, in my opinion. I would like you to look at it and consider that. The other thing, they're still, that takes up an acre and a half of land plus. There's another one right around the corner that's coming up over two and a half acres. And I was told just this last week, this trail we were talking about is going to be, they're asking for abandonment on it also. Please help us keep this trail in memory of Bev Harvey Koenig and Jack. And the neighborhood needs that. The neighborhood has no way to get from the north to the south other than that trail. There, I think my time's close, but I'll carry it on in another one of these. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Palmer. We should speak if necessary. Is Mr. Taylor Earl, who's representing the applicant, did you provide testimony? Are you okay with the motion? Or you want, Mr. Earl?
I'm okay.
Okay. So I have a motion in favor of the staff recommendation. There is a second. Now I'll turn to members of the council. Any comments or questions? Vice mayor, please.
Mr. Stevenson, could you tell me the process of abandonments and plots? And my understanding is we, 76, 78, 79, and 80 are all in its final stages. So I would just like some clarity on how this process starts and how many times we go through this process as a member body of this council in voting.
So Mayor and Vice Mayor, item 76 is a plat to combine parcels of land, some of which are subject to the abandonments that are the subject items for items 78, 79, and 80. The process, I think maybe by way of the record, just to clarify for everyone, I don't think anyone has concerns so much about the plat. What everyone has questions about is the abandonment. That's what Mr. Palmer raised questions. That's what your question on. Just for clarity sakes, those are items 78, 79, and 80. Item 76 is just the plat. But the abandonment process is a process where an applicant goes forward and makes a request to abandon public right-of-way, either a street or alley. As part of that abandonment process, there is public notice. People come down and testify as part of those. Mr. Palmer participated in items 78, 79, and 80 when that public hearing was held. As part of that hearing process, they laid out stipulations that no one appealed to the mayor and council at that time. So the applicant goes forward and fulfills those stipulations in reliance upon that approval. And they fulfill those stipulations. Once they're done with those stipulations, then they come back to the council for items that are on the agenda like today, where it basically is a council action to divest the public interest in the right-of-way and sell it to a private entity. In this case, it's GCU. For item 78, they are paying $164,000. For item 79, $83,000. And for item 80, is $6,600. And these are all shown on this next slide here. This is the close-up of the area. See the areas in pink? They are small little alley portions or the road right-of-way portions in there. They obviously pay more for land area. That's based upon an appraised value that gets submitted to the finance department, and the real estate section reviews and approves that. That's what we require them to pay as part of the abandonment. These items show up on the agenda, not having been appealed. They have already fulfilled all of their requirements. The plat goes forward, and you see, and this red outline here shows the whole plat area, that they are combining with the right-of-way and the private property that they own. And you can see on this slide, this just shows the plat area, making it all one area that they intend to build and develop on. By way of contrast, since the council just heard an alley abandonment a few weeks back regarding the barrister building, that particular alley abandonment was appealed to the mayor and council. And at that point, it was a legislative discussion of should we abandon it or not. These three items come before you, having not been appealed. Mr. Palmer was part of the early process, attended- Mr. Palmer was part of the early process, attended. There's evidence of him on the record. There was a stipulation notifying him of these final ones. So he was there, it was never appealed. So they don't come before you as a legislative discussion. They come before you as a ministerial act to ratify what the abandonment hearing officer approved when the hearing was done.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions by members of this council?
Mayor, I have a question.
Please, go ahead, councilman.
So we were told about fair market value. We're looking at $10 a foot compared to $68 a foot in 2016 to less than $4 a foot. So what is the market, fair market value for this property?
So Mayor and Councilman Noakowski, part of what gets taken into consideration by the real estate appraisal professional and gets reviewed by our professional staff is the developability of those parcels. And while it may be an acre of land, comparing it to a square acre of land that you can develop versus a long linear strip that you can't develop isn't an apples-to-apples comparison. And so that gets downgraded in terms of the value that you can sell that land for because you can't build, even though there may be an acre of land, you can't build a home on a strip of land.
And then the concern that he had from north to south, a pathway from the community to a major street? Is there a blockage there? I'm not sure.
So Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, as part of the agenda items on here today, there is no blockage. You see this map shows in blue here the area that GCU owns currently. The white is land that they do not own. And so you can still get through on 30th Drive. You can still get through further on Coulter, back up to the bigger aerial here. So you can see this larger area here. The land that Mr. Palmer owns is right in here. And you can still get to that parcel today via Coulter Drive and 30th Drive. There was a separate abandonment that the council, that one he did appeal through to the full council, and the council approved that abandonment back in October of 2015. And then Mr. Palmer hired an attorney to sue Grand Canyon University. That lawsuit took a couple of years and was resolved in September of this year. And that one deals with access to this parcel here. None of the items today deal with blocking any access to those parcels. And so as part of the future abandonment of Coulter and 30th Drive, they're required to dedicate an access easement for anyone to use this parcel in the future for whatever uses they so choose. The other thing that Mr. Palmer referenced was the trail that goes along the canal area here that provides a connection through the GCU properties. That is not the subject of any of this request today either.
All right, any additional comments or questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Diego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Pastor. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously, I believe. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Item Number 78?
Is it appropriate to take 78, 79, 90?
Mean 80?
I'm sorry, 78, 79, 80 together? Can we do that?
Yes, you could, Mayor.
Thank you.
My motion is to approve Items 78, 79, 80.
There's a motion, there's a second? Are there any cards on those items?
Oh, yes.
Representative Ray Martinez, did you want to provide testimony on these items, followed by Mr. Gail Palmer? And then Mr. Mendibles in favor and Mr. Taylor Earl, if necessary, in favor. Representative, good to see you.
Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Pastor, and the council. Ray Martinez, State Representative, District 30, GCU graduate. You know, I'm concerned a little bit about the abandonments. I don't want to repeat the comments that have already been made. I, you know, I don't know what the square footage for, but I look at it as police officers, firefighters. And before I go further, I also want to recognize one of my previous officers that was killed two days ago, Steve Arvial. He worked for the Department of Corrections when I was a deputy warden, tragically on the west side. Keep his family in your prayers. My biggest thing, I've known Mr. Palmer for almost 30 years. Lived in the same house for many, many years. My biggest concern is just that he'd be given the same grace, consideration, actions by the council as GCU. I believe in the university. I'm a graduate there. I know it's a good thing for the neighborhood. At the same time, I want to make sure that the citizens that live around there are taken care of. And more importantly, his property off of Coulter, which I believe is a great concept, and that is that it would be a veterans program that would be placed on that property where our military that are getting out of service would be able to utilize their GI Bill and actually be able to utilize the services in that program on that plot of land. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming and for your patience at the last meeting as well. I know you put a lot of time. We appreciate that. How about Mr. Palmer, Gail Palmer?
I'm certainly sorry that I did not know the appeal process. It doesn't pay to be dumb, does it? Anyway, I'm not against them getting that property that we're talking about right now or such, but the price, I think, is way out of line. When one of these sold for $68.40, the city owns the front of that property that's being abandoned, and on the west side of it, it's being abandoned. And it, from $4 to 68, hey, does that make sense to me? But hey, you know, I'm not too bright. The other question, I am, I'm just concerned about this, and it's the one, and it's not on this agenda, but it's another abandonment that's going to come forth very soon. How would you like your street taken away and you have to go through their guard shack to get to your house and all of that? Yes, there's an easement, but an easement is not as good as a public street that's been public for 90 years. And who's going to enforce? If I get harassed, like I've been harassed seven years by GCU, the city's certainly not going to say anything. So it means I have to go to court every, every time that I'm harassed. I'm looking at possibly two years in prison right now because of the harassment, false accusations and such. This has been a war going on for many years. And thank you for listening to me. I would like to keep going on, but I'm sure my time is up. Thank you all, and I would hope that all of you in the audience and on TV take a note of what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Mendibles, did you wish to provide testimony on this item? You're in favor of it?
John Mendibles, I'm the legislative liaison for the Department of Arizona American Legion. I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Gail Palmer and Mr. Martinez because we have developed a proposal and an idea to provide veteran housing for those coming out of service to use their GI Bill and to incorporate the uses of the university of Grand Canyon University in total. With that proposal, with that disposition, and with all these abandonments, it would just be clear that, you know, those veterans that are coming out of war theaters, that are coming out of different dispositions, right? You know, have an easement? Because, you know, war is a different situation, right? These individuals, like these individuals you did before, they raised their hand and they swore to an oath, right? Well, that's all they do. And they give this country a blank check for every drop of their blood. And the only thing that keeps them in line is this oath that they take. That's the only thing that keeps them in line. That keeps their dedication, their loyalty. So for that purpose, for those veterans, I would ask the grace and consideration of this council, this honorable mayor, for that disposition of that project when it goes forward. And to ask the council, to ask GCU to collaborate with Mr. Palmer, to collaborate in this idea and to bring it forward. And perhaps the past weeds that were in the past grown to a healthy bed of flowers, you know? And that's my position here. That's our position here. So that's what we would ask of this council. We support these ideas, these abandonments. It's a process that goes forward. This is progress. We're the fifth largest city in the United States, and guess what? We've got to start acting like a big city now. So I thank the honorable mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's, councilman, please, and then councilwoman, please.
Mr. Mendibles, thank you so much for your advocacy on behalf of our veterans, and thank you for your service. I just want to make a general comment. Mr. Palmer, thank you for your advocacy as well, and Representative Martinez, you're still.
He had to take off.
Okay, I totally understand that. I'll send him a message. Just want to thank him as well. I'd like to facilitate that meeting, that meeting with you and Grand Canyon University. I love the idea of if you're talking about veterans on Mr. Palmer's property there, a project that you were looking at, and perhaps these veterans going to school at GCU, there's something, I mean, it's a conversation that I'd love to help facilitate. And I think it's a great idea, and, you know, so I'll, my chief of staff is right behind you there.
Okay.
And so I believe you've already, she's already sat down with everyone this past week, and at least if you can connect with them at the end of this vote, and we'll talk about moving that conversation forward as well. So thank you, sir.
So that's what I'm asking of the council, if you can make that general statement on these items, particularly these items, these veterans would appreciate that.
Thank you so much, councilman.
Thank you. Thank you for, I have a question for you.
Oh, sure, ma'am.
So just to be clear, are there any abandonments that you feel would hurt access to that?
On the issue of the abandonments and the access, I spoke with Allen here, and we're assured that we'll have access to those properties. But, you know, time goes on, and this is a project that's coming from the ground up. You see, we're going to have to involve the Veterans Affairs, and we're going to have to involve other veteran posts. We're going to have to involve the Department of Education at the federal level. There's a lot of things that go on into this. So for that, to answer your question precisely, I would want to make sure that there's an easement there because, like I said, some of these individuals, they come back broken and sometimes they need help. So we need to get ambulance in there for that purpose. Sometimes that's what is needed. So that's what I would ask.
Wonderful, thank you. And thank you for your service and your advocacy for veterans. It's a real priority for the city, so it's great to hear that we may have a partner. And we recently just did some new things with federal funding for veterans' housing that we hope will make it easier for you to do this type of project.
Yes, you did.
Perhaps today will be the start of something great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments? Councilman Noakowski, please.
Mayor, is there any type of verbiage or stipulation that we could put on there to make sure that there is an easement to this property? So in the future, if our veterans do need that access, that it will allow that? Allen, I'm not sure.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, these particular items do not impact any access to those parcels. The issue at hand will be the abandonment for Coulter and 30th Street, or 30th Avenue that council already approved back in October of 2015. So that will be coming to you, and as a condition of that approval, it does require that public access easement be provided to those parcels. So they will get access to those parcels to develop whatever they wish to in the future. I'm happy to sit down with him and point out that exact language in the stipulation so that they understand that and see that, and then we can talk about that with him further at that time.
And just for the record, so we don't get in trouble in the future for a gift clause or so, according to Allen, that $68 a foot back in 2016 and $10 a foot back in, I'm not sure what it was, and now we're selling it to around $4 a square foot, that the reason that we're doing that is you can't actually build housing or anything on there. And it's, and that's why it's not considered a gift. It would be more of a $4 value to it, right? That would be fair market value?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, the fee is derived from an ordinance provision that allows some portion of it to be done. Another part says you have to get a study done by an appraiser. That appraiser then assesses what the value is, and then the real estate department, real estate section, or the finance department reviews that with their own appraisal experts, and then they provide us advice of yes, this is appropriate to accept this or not. And we are in line with how other government agencies like ADOD and others do the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, members of this council? So you heard the commitment from Councilman Valenzuela to bring both sides together, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
I think that's what you're looking for, and you got it.
I appreciate it.
All right, roll call.
Diego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Pastor.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so those items pass unanimously. I think we're going to go back to our regular agenda now. So we're item, is it Item 13 or something? 13, all right. All right, Item Number 13 is on the payment ordinance. Do we have a motion on 13?
Move Item 13.
No motion and a second. Mr. Clark, do you have testimony on 13? This is for Dominion Voting Systems for Election Programming and Technical Support.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. Live in District One. I put neutral on this because, as you know, ever since the whole thing in 2000 about hanging chads, everybody thought computers would be great. You know, we'll put our ballots in and the magical computers will keep everything on the straight and narrow so we have free and fair elections in this country of ours, this great country of ours. I'm just concerned that we make sure that, you know, we hire the right people too that are independent of this corporation to make sure that, you know, no shenanigans are going on. People can laugh, but it has been proven by many experts in the computer field that computer voting systems can be hacked, and they have been hacked, and all of the controversies. So quite honestly, I wish you would all just go back to having paper ballots, but oh, well, we just have to stick with this and trust the corporation that our votes will be counted fairly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that testimony. Councilman Waring, do you have a statement or comment?
Just, I'm going to vote no on this item. It's not a reflection of Chris Meyer, his leadership of the city clerk's department. I just don't feel the city should be holding its own elections. I feel like we should consolidate elections and partner with the county and frankly, save a lot of money over time, certainly, but in our election process. So that's why I'm voting no on this issue.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments by members of this council? Roll call.
Diego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes seven to one. Next item is Item 14. This is for Downtown Phoenix, Inc., for Downtown Enhanced Municipal Services District. Is there a motion on Item 14?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on Item 14? No cards on that item? Any comments by members of this council? Roll call.
Diego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes seven to one. Next item on our agenda is Item Number 25. This is continued from our last agenda. We lost our, got close to losing a quorum at that meeting. Federal lobbying services, is there a motion on 25?
Mayor, do you want to move them together?
Yeah.
25 and 26.
Move 25 and 26.
Because there's a motion in favor of 25 and 26. 26 has concerns lobbying services at the state level, the state legislature. There's a motion in favor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Leonard Clark, did you wish to testimony on this item?
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers, and thank you for letting me speak and all the veterans for letting me speak. I'm a resident of Phoenix in beautiful District One. I do have concerns. I found out last week that the city of Phoenix was not in compliance with Arizona's Secretary of State, you know, the election law, in that you, as a principal body, the city of Phoenix are supposed to report within a certain time period, the annual, at least, spending or lobbyist to whom you are paying. law, I found that like $30,000 to $40,000 of the money you were supposed to be paying to the lobbyists to let us know who they were was not reported. You did correct it, although I think you should push for a fair law, because I owe money, I have to pay on my political action committees. Every day, I'm fined $10 a day, you know, when I'm late, which is, should be the case. But, I found out that as a principal, you, the city of Phoenix, if you are late, even seven months, if someone makes a complaint to the Attorney General, like I did, that you don't have to pay. You have no fine, which I think is really kind of scary, when we don't have to report on lobbying and lobbyists and all of that. So, I'm neutral on this, and by the way, hopefully, if the governor doesn't have his way, I will be at the Arizona State Legislature. Give me a call, you're not going to pay them $30,000. I'll be right there in the legislation with all the senators and the representatives. I'll get you a good deal, and you don't have to pay me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark, for that testimony and bringing that issue to our attention. Any comments on this item? Councilman, please.
Thank you. First, just a quick clarification in the packet. It says the financial impact of number 25. There is a number, and there is a period instead of a comma, so it would be the financial impact would not exceed $1,380. Just want to make sure that we clarify that, that particular item. And then, just, we are moving forward with a partnership with Holland and Knight. They worked extensively with my office after the floods that hit District Eight in 2014, and helped us get a presidential disaster declaration, which we'd never done in recent history in the city of Phoenix, and was, so they walked with, we went down to FEMA, we went to the White House, and met with others, the congressional delegation, and it was so nice to have an experienced team who'd gotten extensive presidential declarations for other clients in Florida. It was money that was well worth it, and we've had the same great experience on the South Central Light Rail expansion. So, it's been great working with Holland and Knight, and I look forward to supporting this item, but did want to make sure that the typo did not require us to come back and vote on this again.
Thank you so much, and I think it's a type of law that can be fixed administratively, ministerially now, okay? Any additional comments by members of this council?
Mayor.
Councilman Waring, please.
Thank you. I vote against these contracts every time. It's not a vote against the individuals or the firms involved in either item 25 or 26. I don't think the city should be hiring lobbyists in this fashion. My constituents are always surprised when this comes up, that we actually hire lobbyists to go lobby, sometimes against the very things that the citizens have supported. It's a curious thing. I think we're all very capable people, and so are our constituents, of going down to the Capitol and lobbying ourselves, we feel strongly about it. I do that quite frequently, some of us do it more than others, but I just, I have an issue with this lobbying. It's an expensive thing that we do every year, and I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so passes seven to one. Next item on the agenda is item number 27. Item number 27 concerns personnel rule 15 and proposed leaves of absences. Is there a motion on 27?
Motion to approve.
Your second? All right, I'll second it. Mr. Manager, what are you proposing with 27?
Mayor, personnel rule 15 covers lots of things, but in this case, we're talking about the city's leave policy. In June, the council amended this rule to conform to state law passed by the voters, known as Proposition 206. That action in June extended the rule until December 31 of 2017, in order for management and labor to sit down and discuss. We did that over the summer and the fall, and this recommendation comes to you to continue this rule as an interim rule for another 12 months, while we can gather data on leave usage, and therefore be able to give recommendations based on a full year's worth of data, which will take through June of next year, and then we can work on it. Secondarily, this also happens to streamline our Family Medical Leave Act by making it simpler for our employees to use their leave banks for things like maternity and paternity leave, as well as other Family Medical Leave Act illnesses, and that had unanimous support of our labor groups. So, it's two things, is to extend the existing rule about the paid sick time as passed by the voters, and it streamlines our FMLA reporting.
Okay, so there's a motion in favor, there is a second, I have a couple cards on this item. Mr. Leonard Clark, do you wish to provide testimony for this council on item 27?
Sorry about that, Mayor. No, I would not.
No problem. Mr. Abe Arvizo, Jr.?
Mayor, council, and staff, my name is Abe Arvizo, and I am the Vice President of Ask Me Local 2384, but I'm speaking on behalf of all the citizens, citizen employees, not the sworn employees, of the COPQ Group, which is the City of Phoenix Coalition of Unions. And I'm here to say that we are in agreement on going forward on this trial basis, but at the same time, we want you to understand, we're not expecting to take the same of what other people are not getting, because we feel that the voters have voted to give us this opportunity to work and have something so we can retain our employees, and we can also get new employees to come to the city of Phoenix. And so, by having these benefits, the additional benefits, we hope to, as you saw where we put the FMLA together all in one, we hope to do that with the other acronyms that we have, so that we can use those for the benefit of the employee and their families and their family members. So, I hope you would remember a year from now, when we take this up again, that we hope that it will be more than what is presented here as far as the 40 hours, because there are other cities that are given all usage, Mesa, Tempe, and I believe Peoria, all usage of all sick time, to be what they say BE time. So, I hope that you would take that in consideration, and we're going to work with the staff, and work with the other units, and see what works best for the city of Phoenix and the employees, and I just wanted to make sure you remember that a year from now.
Thank you very much for coming down and providing that testimony. Thanks for the willingness to work with our city manager for this interim solution, and willing to support this interim solution, as duly noted, what you think we should be doing as a city longer term, okay? There's a motion in favor, there is a second. I'll now turn it to members of the council. Any comments on this item? Vice Mayor, please.
So, on this item, and knowing and working in other entities and public entities, one of the benefits, and even in some companies, corporate, one of the benefits is to have your sick leave, your vacation leave, and sometimes you possibly have personal leave, and that's one of the benefits for working for those entities. And I am voting for this, because this is a temporary, I am hoping, because I've been told that this will be worked on, and moved towards a year so that it benefits all our employees, and for them to have the ability to use their time and their leave the way it's been set up. And so, I will vote for this yes today, but I am hoping that in the future, they will have the ability to use their leave other than 40 hours, and the system does change in the way that it should work in other entities. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Any other comments by members of this council?
Here.
Please.
I want to thank Mr. Arvizo as well, I want to thank our city staff. I think those are great comments by the Vice Mayor. You know, I'm in support of this, Prop 206 did pass, but I'll tell you, another reason I'm supportive of this was the second portion of what was stated by the city manager. This is, it moves us a little closer to allowing for more extensive paid maternity leave and paternity leave. I have people in my staff, in my office, and we have lots of, obviously, you know, lots of moms, and those who want to be moms, who work for the city of Phoenix, who many times feel like they have to, and this is according to people that I know within the city, that they have to choose between starting a family or moving toward their career marks, or where they want to be within the city, and can they even afford to stay home for a few extra weeks with their child. And it's something that, you know, most men have never had to think about, but that's something that our moms are dealing with and facing. In fact, I sent a memo to the city manager a few weeks ago, asking about that particular policy, and how we compare to others, and what steps we can take as we move forward. So, this moves us toward that, in that direction. So, that's another reason I'm supportive today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any additional comments by members of the council? Roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes seven to one. Next item on the agenda is item number 48. Item number 48, it deals with our shopping cart retrieval program. There is request for a fee increase.
Move item number 48.
There's a motion in favor, is there a second? There's a motion, there is a second. Any cards on that item? No cards? Any comments by members of the council? Roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so that item passes seven to one. Next item on the agenda is item number 52. Item number 52 is a proposed unsolicited development proposal policy for city-owned property. Mr. Manager, maybe you could have someone from staff come explain what's being proposed on item 52?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our lead staff on this has been Chris Mackey, our Economic Development Director, in the direction of our Deputy City Manager, Deanna Johnovich. I'll ask them to come forward, also with them is Gretchen Wolf, our procurement, lead procurement manager. So, Ms. Johnovich, or Ms. Mackey.
What's that?
Mayor, members of the council, with us today is Chris Mackey, Community Economic Development Director, that can walk through the unsolicited proposal policy.
Mayor, members of the council, the unsolicited proposal policy is something that staff has seen in other communities, that they're using as a potential opportunity for redevelopment of land that the city owns, and it's another opportunity, another tool that we have to dispose of projects and bring good property, bring projects into the community. Where we today have several different ways that we can dispose of our property, it could be through a direct sale, through our broker and our real estate department, it could be what you traditionally see out of economic development, which is our RFP process that you see us moving forward with, and several other ways. As we've looked at moving forward, we have combined those efforts together, looking at the federal guidelines and our existing RFP process, to say how can we accept an unsolicited proposal with someone who is interested in our property, who's interested in something that we have, could potentially take forward to the market, and still make it as transparent as possible, by still allowing competition as opposed to direct negotiating on any particular property. And staff's come forward with an unsolicited proposal process on that front.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, you had a thought, a recommendation?
Yes, I actually wanted to continue this item. I wanted to review this thoroughly and look at some of the language, because this is a major policy change, and I wanted to slow it down so that I can look at some of the language that has been written in this unsolicited policy.
All right, so the Vice Mayor's made a recommendation to continue this item. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Does a continuance present any substantive issues? Ms. Mackey.
The next.
December 13.
Yes, December 13.
Mayor, I don't, I don't believe this will present any issues moving forward to the July, to the, sorry, July, December 13 meeting.
Okay, so the motion is to continue, there is a second, there is a card on this item. Because the motion on the table is only to continue, if you have testimony on whether we should hear it now or later time, but that's the only type of testimony it'll take, is whether we should continue it, not on the substantive item. Andy Abkerlin?
Sorry.
I apologize?
No, that's okay.
Do you want to provide testimony as to whether we should continue it or not?
Yes.
Please.
Yes, please. That was very effective.
Ah-ha. Okay, so there is a motion, there is a second. Ms. Mackey indicates we can do so without causing any substantive challenges to any ongoing proposal. Thank you for the great work you've done on it, and I look forward to voting in favor of it when it comes before this council in a few weeks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice, or Councilman, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Right now, it looks like it's a little bit one size fits all. We had an exciting vote at the Housing Subcommittee this week, where we're partnering with Habitat for Humanity. They're going to be developing some vacant lots that the city owns in District Eight, but there were some lots that the city owns in this area that were not appropriate for single-family houses, so they're small lots. I would love for us to be able to dispose of those in an easy process. This one would be too complicated for that, and asking people to pay, there's a $7,000 or $500 fee, wouldn't be appropriate for that type of lots, it felt like it might be unnecessary red tape, whereas if we had, you know, an unsolicited proposal for the downtown bio campus, I've been spending a lot of time, as have you, on master planning that, we would want a lot more public process. So, I think one size fits all doesn't make sense for this, and I would just, as we review this, look at if there's areas where we can maybe make some distinctions between different types of lots, because there's some areas where we have intense public interest, the public has been planning with us, and there are other areas where I think everyone agrees, if there was a user, we might move forward.
Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, as we work over the next two weeks on the language and working with this council, we'll take that into consideration. I absolutely see your position, and I think we can work out something that would make much more sense where it wasn't a one size fits all, especially for those very small residential lots that we have.
Wonderful, and those are some lots where they, because of how we, in particular, obtain the lots, just putting them out, having our finance department go out and sell them is not workable, because there's some significant, usually federal funds involved, but that doesn't mean there aren't private sector solutions that we can't move forward with. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Councilman, please.
I just want to thank you, Chris, I want to thank our city staff for working on this as well. I think it's going to, at the end of the day, add one more tool in our toolbox when it comes to selling some of these lots that, well frankly, we have a directive by the public to sell. I mean, people have come out, and I agree, we shouldn't be a landlord here, but it's going to allow us to move a little quicker, and I'm excited, I'm actually excited about this. This came through the Subcommittee that I have the honor to chair. You've done a good job there. I like what I hear, and, you know, looking forward to hearing a little bit more in two weeks, but I'm also looking forward to supporting this as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? If the motions continue, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 53.
Item 53.
Is there a motion on item 53?
Move item 53.
Is there a second? There's a second. Councilman Waring, do you have comments on item 53?
Thank you, just, I should be brief. So, Chris, I appreciate you being here. So, on this project, I'll just read what we talked about earlier. On this project, the city is divesting itself over property. The developer is paying a fair price. They are agreeing to keep the historical features, et cetera, of the property, and, uh, and then the city is done with it after holding it for sort of some period of time. Um, there's no Jeep lid or anything like that involved. That's all a true statement, correct?
Mayor, councilman Waring, that's factual.
Oh, uh, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so I would just say this, I wish we were doing more projects of this kind. Sometimes I have issues with, uh, we put historical overlays and stuff and everything. I, I think it limits what, you know, potential reinvestment we can get from, from people, giving money back to the taxpayers. Uh, but in this case, that's not the case. They're willing to do it, and, uh, we don't really have to expend anything, correct, given what we just said? And, uh, I think that's a good thing. So I wish, uh, people talked about the Brewers projects last week as something to emulate. Well, I would say, let's try to emulate, emulate this a little bit more, getting what we want without having to spend a whole lot of time and resources ourselves to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
Mayor? Thank you very much. Councilman Noakowski, please.
Mayor, this is a project in, um, District Seven. I just really want to thank our staff and, and the developer for really sitting down with the community and just working things out. Another fine example of that Team Phoenix approach where just sitting down and finding that common ground. Uh, there was some losses on one side and the other, but they found that common ground and created a beautiful project, and exactly what council member, um, Waring was talking about. It's really sitting down, just having those conversations, and I want to thank Chris and your staff for being able to bring people together, and my staff also for all their hard work in making this all happen. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from members of the council on this project? Mr. Nick Wood, attorney for the, um, for the proposed buyer. Did you wish to provide any testimony for this council?
No.
All right.
(laughing)
We haven't had the vote yet. All right. Uh, Dan Clarky is in favor, Janil Penner, Katrina Kaler, Mercedes Gonzalez, Dorina Bustamani, Amy Otto, Ryan Kerr, Kelly Aubrey, Nathan Onansky-Skoye, I so apologize, Andy Abkarian, Matthew Mook, all in favor, not wishing to speak. Is anyone else here in the audience wishing to speak on item fifty-three? All right. If not, roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring.
Yes.
Williams. Pastor. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. It's an exciting project. That's great. Uh, next item is eighty-five, sixty-two, I apologize. Sixty-two. Uh, just a moment. The motion in favor of sixty-two. There's a motion and a second. Uh, this concerns the transit homeless outreach team. Mr. Clark, did you write testimony on sixty-two? Here he comes.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. Uh, like all the rest of you, I would be concerned when I ride light rail for, you know, everybody being safe. Uh, but, um, I just want to make sure, this does seem like it's being contracted out to, uh, a not-for-profit corporation that will actually have social workers, and it's not just going to be police going on to the light rail. If they see somebody that people complain about allegations because they look poor, or whatever they look like, that somehow they're dangerous. Um, also, I would just say that it comes down to a philosophical difference. I don't know what's in the fine print of this, you and this agreement between this agency, in that if you see a homeless person on the light rail, um, do they believe it's, it's an obligation on their part, that you're obligating them to basically try to push the person into the homeless shelter? I'm like you, I would like people to be able to use the services if they're homeless, but at the same time, there's that philosophical disagreement there that homeless people, it, that basically you should not be considered to, to be committing an illegal act if you're homeless. So anyways, my main point is, I just want to make sure there's no police on this team that are going on, but I'm still concerned because I'm worried this team is going to go on there, and they're just going to seek out people that look poor, that look homeless, uh, and that's going to be kind of like considered a crime or whatever, and they're going to just call the police on them, because I don't disagree, I don't agree with this whole respect the riot thing. I think you're getting into constitutional violations of all that. So, thank you very much. I'm neutral on it. Just want to let you know my concerns.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Clark, any other, uh, cards on fifty, or sixty-two? There's a motion, there is a second. Any other comments by members of the council? Roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams. Pastor.
Before I vote, uh, city manager, can you comment on the...
Yeah, just very quickly, the, the point of the outreach team is that it is not the police. Um, right now, we don't have anything other than the police, and this outreach team gives us, uh, professionals who know how to connect people with services rather than depending on the police officers.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Uh, yes, so that makes, I think it's unanimous, unanimous, uh, vote of the city council on that item. Next item on the agenda is item eighty-five. Uh, this is a planning and zoning matter, and so we'll do a short staff report. We'll hold a quick public hearing, and then we'll see if there's a motion, uh, on the item. Can we get a short staff report from Mr. Stevenson, our planning director, on item eighty-five?
Mayor, members of council, uh, I'll be very brief. This is a request for a text amendment to the Townsend Park character area of the downtown code. Uh, the proposed text amendment will amend Chapter Twelve, the regulating maps of the downtown code zoning district. It's for a parcel located at the northwest corner of Third Street and McDowell here, shown in, uh, red today. Uh, the intent of the proposed text amendment is to change the maximum density allowed in the parcel, uh, from fourteen point five dwellings per acre to a maximum of ninety-seven dwelling units per acre. Uh, the proposal does not change the permitted height of the parcel. It already has height entitlements that would allow for a taller building to be located there. The Encanta Voes Planning Committee recommended approval per the staff by a twelve-to-zero vote, the Planning Commission by a seven-to-zero vote, uh, as well as the Downtown Aviation Economy Subcommittee recommended approval by a three-to-zero vote. Since that, uh, subcommittee vote, the applicant, uh, has had some additional discussions with council District Four, and there was a memo that came out just a little while ago, lowering the proposed density to eighty-nine dwelling units per acre. That's what's shown on this map right here. This is a color rendering of the downtown code zoning map. This green area is the subject site, and showing the eighty-nine dwelling units per acre. So with that, staff does recommend approval per the backup memo that came out earlier today from the director, and adoption of the related ordinance, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, is there, okay?
I move to approve the proposed density...
Oh, wait, I apologize. I need a quick, uh, I did public hearing.
Need a public hearing.
I don't think I can right here, but let's see. I'm going to open the public hearing at eighty-five. Public hearing is now open. There is one card. Mr. Lazarus, did you want to provide testimony on that item?
Very quickly, um, thank you all for listening to us on this matter, and thank you particularly to, uh, vice mayor for working with us on this process. Uh, the only objection we have is, uh, the color of green, we're hoping for a little more of a lime green than the green you see up there. Thank you all.
All right, thank you very much, uh, for that testimony, um, uh, Mr. Lazarus. We apologize for, um, lack of color variation with our, uh, technology issues. We'll do the best we can. Other people in favor, not wishing to speak, Coletta Spurling, Gonzalo Barwellay, and Heather Dukes. Anyone else here wishing to provide testimony on item eighty-five? Going once, going twice. The public hearing is now closed. Vice mayor, do you have a motion?
I do have a motion. I just want to say I'm very sad that I will be, we will be losing Los Olivos, uh, but we are obviously modernizing our city. So, um, move to approve the proposed density modifications per the planning director's memo dated November twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen, and adopt the related ordinance.
For motion, we have a second. Any additional comments by members of this council? Roll call.
Gallego. Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
I know.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, item eighty-six. Item eighty-six is an appeal of Historic Preservation Commission decision. It concerns sixteen-ten West Wilshire, uh, Drive. And maybe we get a short explanation as to the nature of the case, and, uh, how we got here, and I, and we, and this, and this time we're acting as kind of a quasi-judicial, uh, body, uh, in this matter. So I'll hand it now over to our planning director, uh, who maybe can give us, uh, the procedural posture of this matter.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. I have with me, uh, Historic Preservation Officer, Michelle Dodds, and Patty Boland with the Law Department. Um, item eighty-six is a unique matter, uh, before the city council. It is a certificate of appropriateness, appeal of a Historic Preservation Commission decision related to a parcel at sixteen-ten West Wilshire Drive. Um, these certificates of appropriateness are required for any work that would impact the outside structure of a, um, home or a parcel that has a historic designation on it. And in this particular case, uh, it has gone forward through the process, um, that starts out with the staff and then goes to HP hearing officer, then upon appeal to the HP commission, and ultimately lands before the mayor and council, where you act in a quasi-judicial manner in terms of your review of the evidence that's submitted today and presented, um, and then make your decision, uh, based upon there whether or not the construction, uh, that was done on the site is appropriate for the historic district. With that, I'm going to introduce Ms. Michelle Dodds here, uh, who's going to, uh, kind of walk us through some of the work that has been done, uh, relative to her office on this site.
Mayor and council, uh, what you see is, uh, an aerial with the subject site highlighted in yellow, uh, sixteen-ten West Wilshire Drive in the Del Norte Place, um, Historic District. And, uh, this, these are photographs of the subject property. You can see, um, the, uh, materials are redwood and brick, and it originally had, um, steel casement windows. We first received, uh, notice, a report of unpermitted work on April twenty-fourth of this year. A stop work order was issued on April twenty-sixth. Work continued at the site, and on May twenty-third, a notice of violation was issued and recorded. And then, uh, work continued on the site. On, uh, June the twenty-third, another stop work order was issued. Uh, work continued at the site, and, uh, the property was listed, uh, for sale, uh, July thirteenth. Sorry. Uh, what you see in front of you is the actual stop, uh, work order notice that was posted, uh, on the property on the door. And so what the applicant is seeking to do is after-the-fact approval, force, uh, the stucco over the original brick and redwood siding, reduction of a window opening near the front of the house, replacement of all the steel casement windows, and installation of a fence adjacent to the door. The hearing officer's decision was to approve a certificate of appropriateness, uh, with stipulations that the stucco be removed and that the fa, the fence be moved back to actually meet the ordinance standards, which requires the fence to be three foot back, if it's over three foot tall, to be three foot back, uh, from the front of the house. Uh, that decision was appealed to the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, they approved the, his, the, uh, certificate of appropriateness with this two stipulations from the hearing officer, and an additional stipulation that that window opening that they modified near the front, uh, door be, uh, be put back in its, in its original state, the size and with the steel casement window. Uh, and then you have, it was appealed, uh, to you all, and, uh, what you see before you are options to consider.
All right, uh, is that the full presentation from our professional staff?
Yeah, with that, we're, we're happy to answer any question.
Thank you very much. Councilman Williams, please.
Are those materials still available, that they can replace them, the brick and, and the redwood?
Councilwoman Williams, uh, members of the council, uh, the idea is to, because, uh, is to remove the stucco. The stucco was not adhered directly to the redwood. There's, uh, something where it could be removed, repair would be necessary, but, uh, we believe it can't be removed.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional questions at this time for our professional, uh, staff? All right, this is in, uh, the vice mayor's, uh, district, and, uh, she may either have a motion or, or some questions now. Vice mayor?
Can you tell me how many times there was a stop order?
Uh, vice mayor, members of the council, a, a stop work order was placed on the property twice.
And when the stop work order is placed on the property, what does that mean?
Uh, vice mayor, members of the council, that means work should cease, and they should come into the city to seek the proper permits.
So the applicant continued to ignore the stop order twice?
The, uh, stop work order notice of, uh, violation, uh, work continued at the site.
The, the work got completed, then?
They ignored the stop work orders that were, were placed on the door. One of the, the pictures clearly showed, uh, you know, while the work was going on here, you see that, uh, it's hard to see in this picture, but you see it clearly is under construction. They should have stopped at that point, uh, and came in and got permits. This is a close-up of what was shown right there, where, uh, the city was saying, you don't have permits for this work, stop and come in and get permits, and they kept on going. And I believe this was the first notice for that particular stop work order.
And what was the reason? Do we know, uh, why they continued? Ignored it, or continued? I mean, did anybody have contact in the Historic Preservation Office, or no?
Our, uh, vice mayor, members of the council, uh, there was communication between the inspector, uh, and, uh, a representative.
Okay. Um, I'm just a little dumbfounded, and the reason why is because I live in a historic neighborhood. I also know when you purchase in a historic neighborhood, the realtor tells you that you are purchasing in a historic neighborhood, and that there are stipulations around preserving the home, and, uh, this home was part of the registry. Now, my understanding, it is no longer part of the registry.
Uh, vice mayor, uh, members of the council, uh, it is still part of the Del Norte Historic District. However, it was a contributor to the district, uh, but it, in its current state, it is no longer a contributor.
Understand. Um, so, um, if you could go back to the three options, because I, I think I'm getting to where I, I'll say my motion, and then you may have to correct me. So, um, move to deny the appeal and uphold the Historic Preservations, uh, Commission and Hearing Officer's ruling.
I'll second that.
Okay, there is a motion, there is a second. Um, you...
We just have to clarify that there's a little difference between the HPC and the officer.
I need clarity. That's why, I need clarity.
I think there's confusion, uh, because I think some of the cards are, uh, are, maybe have marked the wrong position in, because they were unclear what the staff was recommending the, uh, motion be. So, please.
So, mayor and vice mayor, um, this entire application is a certificate of whether or not the work that was undertaken is appropriate from a historic preservation standpoint. And so, the action that the HPC commission took was that it is appropriate to issue a certificate of appropriateness, subject to compliance with the stipulations, which is remove the stucco, enlarge the window, move the gate back. Um, and so, I believe the motion that you're intending to do is deny their request to say it's a cer, it's appropriate for just as they've done it, but approve it per the HPC commission...
Correct.
...subject to those stipulations, which is to restore it.
Okay, so the maker of the motion, uh, make sure that that, I think that was the intent, and so now we've clarified for the record. This is second, uh, support that? Okay, the second does, uh, support that. Uh, there are folks in the, uh, community wishing to, uh, speak on this item, both in favor and opposed. Mr. Schalkmark, uh, you, you said, you marked in favor, um, I assume that means in favor of this motion of, uh, the vice mayor, and then also, uh, Opal Wagner, I assume you are in favor of the motion made by the vice mayor, and then...
That is correct, for me.
Ms. Rendon, you're in favor of the motion as well, and then Gigi George. So we'll, we'll change the cards and make sure they reflect, uh, that. But the first person before, I just want to clarify that. The first person I wanted to give the opportunity to come to the, uh, podium to speak is Logan Aliyah, who is the representative of the applicant. Um, I wanted you to give the first opportunity to, uh, provide testimony to this council. Obviously, the motion is, uh, is, uh, what the staff is recommending. Please, go ahead.
Mayor, vice mayor, uh, mayors, members of the council, thank you. I, I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant, MWMBX LLC. Uh, I, I'm from the Rose Law Group. Uh, we became involved in this case two weeks ago, uh, and the council was kind enough to continue consideration of this to allow us an opportunity to, to get up to speed and to talk with, uh, with staff about the status of the case. Uh, I, I think that I need to open, uh, with a, with a heartfelt apology from my client. Uh, it was, uh, never our intention to engage in an unpermitted illegal renovation of the home. Uh, my client purchased the home at an auction, uh, and relied on a third party to do renovations, uh, and wasn't, wasn't present on-site, is, is an out-of-state investor, uh, and, uh, certainly didn't mean to ignore, uh, the stop work orders. Uh, and so, I mean, to the, I, I think it's undeniable, uh, that we didn't follow the appropriate protocol here, uh, but it certainly was not meant to be a malicious disregard of the law, uh, and, and we didn't mean to damage the home. We meant to, to make the home a better place, uh, to live and a better place for the neighborhood. Um, I, I think today, uh, what we're asking for is some limited concession. Uh, I, I mean, uh, obviously, we would love to just be able to keep the renovation that we did, uh, but we understand the, the historical significance involved. Uh, and so, there, the original decision, uh, made by the Historic Preservation Hearing Officer, uh, would require us to remove the stucco and move the fence... Officer, uh, would require us to remove the stucco and move the fence, uh, but would allow us to maintain, uh, the alteration done to the windows. Uh, the windows in the home were modernized, uh, the dimension of one of them was changed, uh, and they're now, uh, I mean, they're better windows than they were before. Uh, and the, the cost involved in, uh, in replacing all of the windows and doing the structural modification, uh, to change the window dimension is substantial. Uh, and we believe that the initial decision made by the, uh, the hearing preser- the historic, the Historic Preservation Officer was appropriate, uh, and that the, the home can maintain its historic and, uh, contributing status, uh, even if the window is allowed to remain the same size. So, so we ask for some limited concession with a, with an open mea culpa.
Thank you very much, uh, for that, uh, uh, testimony. Uh, Ms. Dodd, so the, the hearing officer recommended some of what's being recommended today, but did not recommend or did not require that the windows, is that accurate, what it was just stated relative to the dimensions having been changed previously?
Uh, Mayor, Members of the Council, uh, yes. The hearing officer went with staff's recommendation, which are the first two stipulations. Staff did not, uh, have a stipulation to, uh, replace, to resize the one window. Uh, it does require a, a building permit when you resize the window, uh, but staff felt that by at least removing the stucco, repairing the brick and the redwood, that it would, it would, uh, retain enough of its historic character, uh, to be at least in eyes of the city, a, a contributor again.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you very much. There are other folks here to provide testimony unless there's additional questions for Mr. Aliyah at this time? Okay. I should mention also Doris McVeigh and William Poulsen are in, up in favor of holding the Historic Commission recommendation. Gigi George, do you want to provide testimony for this council?
Thank you, Mayor, and Members of the Council. My name is Gigi George and I live at 1102 West Palm Lane. I'm appearing today as an individual. Ms. Wagner will represent the Phoenix Historic Neighborhoods Coalition later. This is my opinion. The applicant has stolen the illustrious past of this home by obliterating the historic facade that qualified it as a contributor to the Del Norte Historic District. I will say that the applicant's representative here may be appearing to cloud the issue because there's only one window under consideration that the HP Commission wanted to have put back. It's not all the windows, it's one window. In the face of two stop work orders and a mailed notice of violation, the illegal work continued and the historic redwood facade was covered with stucco. It appears to me, and this is certainly a personal opinion, that the house was dropped from outer space, a bit of debris hurled into the midst of a historic neighborhood. The applicant is now in a position to steal the future of this historic property if the facade is not restored. Any future owner will not be able to receive the state historic tax credit if the stucco exterior is not removed. This is very important when you're maintaining a historic house. We ask the council to consider the precedent-setting implications of allowing a speculator to have his way with a historic neighborhood. This type of greed needs to be stopped before it infects all historic neighborhoods. I ask you to please support the hearing officer's decision, the stipulations by the HP Commission, and, uh, we have here to present to you several pages of, um, signatures by members of the historic Del Norte Place Neighborhood, asking that it be upheld in its entirety to return the property to his, its historic integrity in a designated historical neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much for that testimony. Ms. Wagner?
Um, Mayor and Council, my name's Opal Wagner. I live at 330 West Coronado Road, and I'm here today on behalf of the Phoenix Historic Neighborhoods Coalition. Every time one of these contributing houses is altered to the extent that it becomes a non-contributor is of great concern to us. And, um, we previously, previously sent a letter to, um, the council, um, when this first came up on the agenda, November 15th, so I'll just refer to that. And I just want to speak to a couple of the, the issues with this home. The first is, um, the applicant had every opportunity to mitigate whatever, um, damages they're claiming. They, the Historic Preservation Office provides wonderful services to the community that we've seen time and time again, seeing that their staff work with them on best practices for historic preservation, um, and help homeowners achieve their goals for their home without damaging the historic status of the home. And it, it's just, it's just a real shame that the applicant here did not avail themselves of those services by the city, which are, are really free for the asking. And then, I just want to mention something Mr. Aliyah, um, mentioned, that they had put in better windows, and I, I really think that's in the eye of the beholder. And I have here some photos that were taken of every house on the block of 1600 West, um, Wilshire. And it's pretty easy to see the home that was altered at 1610. It's like one of these things is not like the other, but if you look at the beautiful windows, um, on the rest of these homes that are in their original condition. And, uh, so I would just ask that and hope that the council will uphold, um, the Historic Preservation Commission's ruling and, um, require that the repairs be made, including, um, returning the window to its previous, uh, size. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Rendon?
Mayor, I think Ms. Wagner and Ms. Doris do.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your, um-
Thank you.
All right, any other, uh, folks here wishing to provide testimony on this, uh, item?
I would.
Ms. Jackmark, I apologize. Please come forward.
Thank you.
Please.
Mayor Stanton, Members of the Council. I'm John Jackmark. For seven years, I lived in the Del Norte neighborhood. I wrote the first historic survey of the neighborhood. I lived in the neighborhood before it was on the Historic Register. Uh, I was on the Historic Preservation Commission. I worked in the Historic Preservation Office. I am a member of Historic Sites Review, uh, for the state. When this house was built, 1941, it was an extremely modern home. Uh, it was low-pitched. It was a combination redwood and brick. It was built with permits, as was most of the homes in the area, if not all. What has, what the Historic Preservation Office and the hearing officer has asked that it be returned to its original state? To answer, uh, Councilman Williams, yes, this is redwood. It is available at Held Lumber. It is available right now. The stucco that was put on the property is represented by flour here. Water is added to it. The, the redwood was covered with paper. It was not covered, uh, with chicken wire, so it is possible to return it to its original form. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Jackmark. Okay, uh, anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this, uh, item? You saw us talking over here a little bit, 'cause I wanted to get clarification on the window, uh, issue. It's been cleared up for, at least for me. Vice Mayor, have any questions or comments? Please.
Just for the public, can you, um, demonstrate what-
Tell us more about the windows.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, you see in, uh, in this slide, which shows the stop work order, this is the window in question right here. You see this line below is the original window frame here. They framed that in and put stucco over it, and now the new window size is much smaller. And so, that's the window that is under question, where the HP Commission said, "Restore that window, uh, to its original size and put back in a, a window type that is a, is the original one or a replica of the original one?"
A, a steel casement window.
A steel casement window that would mirror what was there before versus the new one. And this, uh, picture, uh, right back here at the beginning, you can see, here's the, here's the finished work, and you can see the little indentation here, which is where it's framed in, and the stucco and the smaller window versus what was shown here in this larger window back here.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Lee, I wanted to get a chance to, uh, you, I was confused by your testimony. I would thought you were suggesting that your client had bought it when the wi- when the window changes had already been made, but that, but our professional staff is suggesting that your client made the changes to the size of the window.
I'm sorry if I was unclear. Uh, no, we, we did change the windows.
Okay. All right.
We bought it at auction. I don't know if that's important, but, uh-
Yeah, I get that, but you also, as a owner of purchasing a property, also, even if that's an auction, I would go visit what I purchased and see the neighborhood that it's in. I mean, I get it.
All right, we, thank you very much, uh, for that, uh, for that clarification. Okay, so the motion is to, um, accept the, was it, what's their correct term?
Mayor, Members of Council, the, the correct motion was to, uh, to deny the applicant's request for a certificate of appropriateness as, uh, constructed today and approve a certificate of appropriateness, subject to compliance with the stipulations from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay.
Which is-
And that would include the s- removal of the stucco, putting the window back to its historic, uh, state, if you will, and then, uh, moving of a fence of some sort?
There we go, right there. The, these are the stipulations from the HP Commission, uh, the three bullet points right there, so.
Okay, that's the motion. On our turn, Members of the Council, any comments or questions from Members of our council as to the Vice Mayor's motion? Councilman Nowakowski, please.
Mayor, I just really want to thank all those individuals that came out and, that are advocates for historic preservation. I used to represent this, um, this area before the district, uh, lines were moved. And I can tell you that a lot of people work hard to make sure that these historic homes are preserved and that their neighborhoods are preserved also. So, I just want to thank you all for coming out. I know how hard, how hard it is to come out to a council meeting and take up some time and be probably on the lower end of the agenda too, so thank you for your patience and thank you for continuing to keep our history of the city of Phoenix alive.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments by Members of this council? Roll call. Diego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams. Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stan. Yes, uh, the Vice Mayor's motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 87. Uh, item 87 concerns, consideration of citizen petition related to group homes. This was on our agenda last time. We delayed it so that way we could get legal advice and have a special, uh, executive session on the City Council on the issue of group homes and/or sober living homes. We did receive that legal advice earlier, uh, today, so now I'll turn to Members of the council. Is there a motion as it relates to item 87 in light of the legal advice we received-
Mayor?
Earlier? Please, Councilman.
If I might, and I may need, um, Alan and Chris's help on this motion, but I think what we're gonna do is not accept the petition, but in, instead, we're gonna move forward with a aggressive plan to make sure we get some things adopted, including looking at some licensing and some additional zoning restrictions. So, um, am I on the right track?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, yes. Uh, so, real quickly, um, on this partic- petition here, we've had a number of meetings with our group home. We propose to have more of them. Uh, you'll recall, in the petition, there was a, uh, two tracks. One was a potential moratorium. The other one was to adopt this aggressive schedule that you mentioned to get things back. We're recommending that council accept the aggressive, uh, schedule to get items back. The first one, slide here, shows you our schedule through December, which would be having more, uh, discussions regating to the license as well as, uh, the zoning changes. Ultimately, come back to council again on the December 13th here to have a full discussion, uh, with you about the overall improvement package. That's after a couple more meetings with our group home committee that's comprised of TAP residents as well as group home operators, and then in, in December.
Alan, I think there's one correction on that slide, actually, if you go back. I think there, we actually, there was actually agreement that it would come straight to the council on the 13th, not the subcommittee.
Correct, yes, I apologize. The, the new December 6th, there's going to be a, a group home meeting, uh, put in place. It's already been scheduled in lieu of the December 6th, uh, subcommittee meeting pursuant to the discussions that the council had at the last meeting of skipping the subcommittee. And so, we will, uh, come back right to the 13th on that. Uh, and then, in December and January, we'll be working to, uh, make changes, uh, for the city code amendment related to the licensing side of things. They'll have to post a new fee up on the city's website for 60 days pursuant to state law, go through, have stakeholder meetings pursuant to their requirements of the city code, so that, uh, they can bring something back forward to you guys, uh, in March, along with the zoning text amendment that will go the normal zoning process. We'll be before the village planning committees in January and February, Planning Commission, and then I'll come back to, uh, council on March 21st for consideration related to licensing as well as the, um, uh, the zoning changes. And, uh, I, I do believe that the council also is going to, uh, pursue some changes at the state level for potential licensing there as well. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very, uh, thank you very much. And so, uh, did that answer your question, Councilman Stark?
Yeah, it does. So, I think our motion would be to not accept the petition, but move forward with our aggressive schedule to get back to council with licensing and zoning clarification. Mr. Spellman is here. I know he introduced the, uh, petition, so I, I think you guys have agreed to it, but I guess we'll wait, but that would be my motion.
All right, that's the motion. Is there a second? There is a second. Mr. Manager, if you have some clarification?
I was just gonna say, I think, to put a finer point on, I think you're actually approving something that, that addresses a, a second track of the petition, so-
Right.
This actually meets part of what the petition asked for.
Thank you.
Yes. We're working our way through citizen petitions, how to, how to handle them. We're getting a lot of them. All right, Mr. Spellman, uh, testimony on this item?
Mayor and Members of Council, Jeff Spellman with Take Action Phoenix. I'm a little bit confused about not accepting the petition. Uh, the petition, uh, identified what the issue was. We've been talking about that for quite some time. It provided two different tracks that the City Council could take. One was to institute essentially a moratorium, and that is our concern about the number of, of, uh, group homes that could potentially be approved between now and when a comprehensive ordinance goes into place. Uh, as an alternative to that, you could accept a framework that outlines a plan to get us to March 21st, uh, and, and with that. There's still a lot of work to be done. Um, we're happy with the report that the staff put together, the timeframe and the framework that they put together. I think this is, uh, legally as quick as they could possibly get this done. That was our concern, that it was moving too slowly, uh, and I think they've responded to us very appropriately with that report, that frame, framework and that timeframe. So, with that, we're happy with that. Um, there's still a couple more weeks of work happening in the Working Committee that the citizens and stakeholders are involved with, and I think there will be some additional details come to you on, uh, March, uh, I'm sorry, on December 13th. So, with that, we-
All right, thank you very much.
We support the, uh, report.
Thank you very much. I think, uh, my impression is that what staff has worked, has been working on, has aggressively been working on, and the second part of, I guess, option two under the petition are so closely aligned to be a distinction without difference, and so, you know, again, we're working our way through how to deal with these citizen petitions, but I think the motion was intended to, uh, move forward as aggressively as possible with a city ordinance, which is, I think, what the community was, which you were asking for through tests.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, how about, uh, Mr. Mark Lewis?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Mark Lewis, and I'm here representing, uh, New Dimensions in Recovery. Uh, they own a number of group homes here, and, um, I'm, I'm here in opposition to the moratorium, which I think we've dispatched with, and in support of the expedited staff program. I think that you found a good way to balance the, the differing interests here. I support the concept of expedited licensing that you propose. We have industry support for a good neighbor policy, for minimum standards that are the best in the industry, and a concept for hearing on, um, issues related to the appeals. Um, the, the concern that my client has are with the strict protection of the- has are with the strict protection of the anonymity of both the location and the persons as we move forward. And what I mean by that is, we just had some women move into a group home, and the neighborhood found out about it. They had a meeting, and so now they're flying drones over the house during an AA meeting in the evening to find out what's going on. In other cases, we've had neighborhood associations do enhanced notification, which causes damages to both persons and property. We need to avoid violence, and the only way we're going to do that is protect the anonymity of the address in question. And we're hoping that we can develop that as we move forward with the licensing process. So thank you guys very much for your help, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis, for that testimony. Not wishing to speak, Larissa Baldorama, Maria Yu Ying, Frank Dansel, and Pam Fitzgerald. I think that means that you are in favor of the motion made by Councilwoman Stark. How about Gail Perry...I apologize for not being able to read the handwriting, but the Assisted Living Home Association. Just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Stanton. Councilmembers, my name is Gail Perry Dixon, and I am president of the Arizona Assisted Living Homes Association. I am also the owner of Dreamcatcher Assisted Living Home in Phoenix. I am against the moratorium. Our association is against the moratorium, but that's not what we're speaking about at this point. We do not oppose the fast track. The city planners, however, have suggested that assisted living homes be omitted from the licensing portion, not the zoning portion, but the licensing portion of this project, and we are very much in favor of that. Assisted living homes currently involved in the licensing right now want to be able to continue to be licensed with the state. We are heavily regulated by the State Department of Health Services and by the Board of Examiners of Arizona's Nursing Care Institution Administrators and Assisted Living Facility Managers, and because we are already so heavily regulated, any additional regulation on us would be onerous and burdensome. But thank you very much for the opportunity today.
Thank you for coming down. That testimony and your patience has been a long meeting. Joe Landon, not wishing to speak, is opposed. I assume that means opposed to the moratorium. Okay, great. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
I put in, I thought, Mayor.
Please come forward, Mr. Clark. Good to see you again, and then, since the councilwoman has some additional comments or questions. Okay, please.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmember. As a lifelong resident in Phoenix for 53 years, except in the Army, you know, I've come to see a lot of our fellow residents who have family members who need to get treatment. We're always talking about mental health and all these things, so being that the sponsor, I thank the sponsor and the concerns. We all want to see that this is regulated. I want to thank the sponsor, and being that they support what you're doing here, I'm just raising the concern again that I think we're going to have to check into the legality when citizens present petitions, if there's a difference between outright saying, "We just don't even look at the petition," as the city charter seems to say, as opposed to, "We're going to vote on it up or down." I think that is still some kind of legal distinction that seems to be made, but being that the sponsor is now saying, "Hey, we support it," in this case, I guess that is moot, but I'm concerned about the petitions, you know, in the charter, and you're just saying, "Oh, we don't even accept the petition." I don't know if that's de facto voting against it, but it doesn't seem the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank all the residents that have been involved in this and their patience, because they've had quite a lot of patients, and quite a lot of them do live around sober living homes. The one thing I do want to stress is that hopefully, the state takes another look at that as they regulate assisted living, as they regulate other types of group homes. This really, to me, is a statewide concern, and if we set up our own set of rules, and then Mesa sets up their own set, then it's going to get to be very confusing for the industry, who I think wants some consistency throughout the state. So I hope that our residents help us go to the state legislature and try to talk about it from a statewide, but in the meanwhile, I think we're trying to do the best we can do to help you out. And I do want to thank them, because they have never been anti-group home. They're not opposed to that. They just want to have some sense of standards so they can protect their neighborhoods and also protect the residents that may be in the sober living homes. So thank you for everything you guys have done, and thanks again for your patience as well as the industry.
All right, thank you very much, councilman. Any other comments by members? Councilman, please.
I also want to thank all the neighborhood leaders that make up TAP. You're making us a better city. This is, you know, it's a tough issue. Obviously, we need more legislation, not only at the legislature, but at the federal level, and this is something that we're working on together. We're finding solutions together. I want to thank you for your patience and your willingness to continuously come to the table and truly, you know, roll up your sleeves and work on this with us. And I do want to thank the industry as well. This is something that we've talked about for a long time. We've had people from the industry come out, those of us, those in the industry who are doing the right thing, and I've said this over and over again, you have nothing to worry about. Those who are not, you probably should be worried. And, you know, and I think that's always been the sentiment that I've shared. There is a need out there, and so I want to thank those in the industry that are doing the right thing and doing it correctly. There is an epidemic out there. There is a crisis, an opiate crisis, and so on. I think we, as a society, recognize that. What kind of society would we be if we say that there's clearly a crisis, but we do nothing to help mitigate that? And so those in the industry that are doing the right thing, I want to thank you for that. I've heard neighborhood leaders from the TAP group also say those things. There is definitely a need, and we are advocating for those that are doing the right thing. This is about finding some rules and bringing some order into, you know, something that obviously needs to be reined in a bit, because communities and neighborhoods are being negatively impacted by those who are not doing the right thing. So again, I want to thank you for your patience and your willingness to work on this. And I also want to thank my colleague, Deborah Stark, who has worked on this quite a bit, and it's been an honor to work on this with her from the council's perspective. I've learned a lot from Councilwoman Stark, and I look forward to, as we all continue moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of our council? Roll call.
Gallego. Yes. Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Pastor. Yes. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda, item 88. I think we can, these are some items that we have to move forward from the last agenda. Maybe we take them as a group, can we? Let's see, 88, 89. Oh, okay, sorry. So if we do a reconsideration on, looks like 88, 89, 90, and 91 as well, is that a reconsideration? We have to separate reconsider. I'm sorry. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I guess we have to do them individually. I apologize. Okay.
We do.
So item 88, we need a motion to reconsider. Is that correct? Okay, so we can do, can someone do a motion to reconsider on item 88?
I move item 88.
There's a motion, a second, to reconsider 88. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Can we get a substantive motion on 88, then?
It's 89.
Oh, I'm sorry, 89. I apologize.
I move item 89.
There's a motion and a second on 89. Any cards on the item? Roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. So is there a motion to reconsider item 46 on the last agenda, which is now item 91 on this agenda?
I move item 91, or 90?
Nope.
90.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Is there a substantive motion on 91?
Move 91.
There's a motion, there is a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is item number 92. This was requested by myself, Councilwoman Waring, and Councilwoman Stark to add this item onto today's agenda. The item is a proposal to name Terminal 3 at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport after Senator John McCain. And I will now hand it first over to Councilwoman Waring, who had an opportunity to work with Senator McCain for a long period of time to see if we have a motion on 92, see if we have a second. There are some cards on this item, and now we'll hear from, and then we'll hear from members of the council before taking a vote. Councilwoman Waring, did you want to make the motion on item number 92?
Yeah, Mayor, can we...
Please, go ahead. Councilwoman Stark, I apologize.
Just a point of clarification. We're not actually changing the name today. There is a process that we have to go through, which will require public hearings before, I believe, the Heritage Commission, and so we're just initiating a process today. That comes back from my years as being the planning director. There is a process.
Move to approve, Mayor. We have a motion to approve item number 92, the request to name Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport Terminal 3 to the John S. McCain III Terminal. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on that proposal. I'll now turn to the members of the community who are here. We have both in favor and some, it looks like, opposed, and some neutral. Mr. Clark, you want to go first? You're neutral on this item?
I would, if you would like, I could let the other members go first.
I called you first. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmember. You know, as you've known, I've stood here in defense of Senator John McCain in the past, but being that I'm not a Vietnam veteran, all I can do as a citizen of Phoenix and native of Arizona is thank all the Vietnam veterans. The reason I put neutral is because there are so many Vietnam veterans who either did not make it home or came back, as my good friend William Crumb, God rest his soul, and died from the effects of Agent Orange, and had to fight the Veterans Administration for so long. So I know nobody likes the position of being in the middle, but I would only ask, if you name it after Senator John McCain, you find a way, just like at the state Capitol, they list all of the World War I veterans who lost their lives, that you find the way to make a plaque to all of the Vietnam veterans who did not come back. And all I can say is, thank you so much, and welcome home, Vietnam veterans. I know you were spat on, and you were put down. You served your country, and again, it's always easy to blame the soldiers and the police, but it is our leaders, like Lyndon Baines Johnson and the others, the politicians, the leaders. We should point our blame or our credit towards you. So I ask that Mayor Stanton, even though I'm neutral on this, I would support it if you will find, put an amendment to put a plaque for all of the Vietnam veterans from Arizona. It is possible to do, who did not make it back, serving their country and dying in that conflict. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. How about Ren Ramsey, also neutral?
Yeah, thank you. I like what this guy said about veterans. I'm a veteran. My family is veterans. My grandfather was a POW MIA. He didn't come back unlike John McCain and some of the other luckier ones. So, you know, his background is interesting to me, but what I find troublesome is, there's a large number of veterans out there, and there are wars that they served in that are not getting properly, we're not getting properly memorialized. So I would like the council to reconsider possibly adding something like what he said on there, or in fact, potentially adding for another terminal, or in fact, for the whole Sky Harbor, something that would remember some of our other veterans, such as the Navajo Code Talkers. I can't imagine of a better group of Arizonans. They're native to our state. They served with gallantry. I mean, they're legendary in the history of military warfare and the intelligence community. Sky Harbor is an international gateway for the world into Arizona. It's also a national gateway and a regional gateway. I would just like the council to consider adding or perhaps changing their movement in this direction, remembering that there are other wars that need to be remembered and memorialized, and that potentially consider the Navajo Code Talkers as some sort of memorial within the Sky Harbor, or perhaps even renaming the whole terminal after that. Thank you.
Thanks so much for that testimony. How about Roseanne Shawiak? I hope it is for us. Did you wish to write testimony?
She's in the bathroom.
What's that?
She's in the bathroom.
Okay, I'll come back to her later. How about Russ Whittenbeere? You're opposed to the proposal?
The Right Honorable Mayor of Phoenix, Arizona, and the associate members of the Phoenix City Council, it's an honor and a privilege to speak before such an august group. I'm here today, first of all, my name is Russ Whittenberg. I reside in Carefree. I'm not one of your constituents, but I pay taxes, which affects Sky Harbor, and so I'd like to give you a quick little bio. I, too, am a Vietnam-era Air Force pilot, left the service for the rank of captain, and I became a captain with Pan American World Airways and United Airlines, and I've made many arrivals and departures at Sky Harbor, so I kind of feel I have a little bit of a touch of, understand what Sky Harbor is all about. It pains me to think that, being a lifelong Republican, I know John McCain very well. In fact, I worked, when he first ran for the House, I helped get him elected. I've been a PC my whole life, except the time when I was on service. And it hurts me to stand here tonight to talk to you about being against this move to rename Sky Harbor, because John McCain's military history, and I know firsthand, is not what everybody thinks it is. I hate to say this, but John McCain's real military history is something you would not want his name up on Sky Harbor and Terminal 3. Now, I understand political reality when I see it. I think I kind of understood how the Spartans felt at Thermopylae over there in Greece, because obviously, political correctness being what it is, doing what I am right now is not very politically correct. But I'm a fighter. I've always been a fighter, and I like to talk about what I believe in. John McCain does not deserve this honor of having his name put in lights metaphorically at Sky Harbor. Now, if you people on the city council really knew the other side of the coin, and there's always, I've never seen a coin that didn't have two sides. If you really understood what the other side of the coin and his real military record versus the ballyhooed military record, which were all been brainwashed in over the last 30-some years, I think there'd be another scratching of the head and saying, "Well, maybe we ought to talk about this a little bit." So what I have here, I have, I put together real quickly...
Thank you.
...a kaleidoscope of what I consider documentation, which is irrefutable and non-debatable, documentations which every single person on the city council must read, because you have a fiduciary responsibility to inform yourself of the truth and the facts.
Thanks so much. Our city clerk will pick that up from you, and we've got over the two minutes. I apologize.
There's nine packets here. Each one has a paper clip on it. I'd like each one of the council to read this at their opportunity, and I'd like to have somebody on the city council move in second, a move so that you put this off to the next city council meeting before you vote on this.
All right, thank you for your suggestion. I appreciate it. We are needing to move on to the next speaker. Thank you so much. Sir, we only have two minutes per speaker, so we're going to move on. Ms. Roseanne Shawiak? Yeah, you had a question, please. You're next. Each speaker gets two minutes, and I'm very generous with that time.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm sorry, ma'am, we gave three minutes to the people for the citizen comments. For the agendized item, we do two minutes per. I apologize for the mis, for the misunderstanding. Ms. Shawiak, is that how you pronounce it?
No, pronounce the W like the double V, Shaviak.
Okay.
And I'm a poet, and very well-known, and McCain helped me quite a few years ago, one time, and he's, I did vote for him in the past, but I found out all about his military record, everything, and I do not think that citizens of Phoenix would like the Terminal Three to be changed to John McCain Terminal. Tillerson, Barry Goldwater, somebody else would be a lot better. You know, somebody honest and that we trust.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, Terminal Four is named for Senator Barry Goldwater. The proposal's not to name the airport, but to Terminal Three after Senator McCain. Judy Staub, did you provide testimony on this item? She had a lead, she's opposed to the recommendation. Gilbert Arvizu?
Mayor and members of council, my name's Gilbert Arvizu. I am in support of item ninety-two. Earlier this year, I had the opportunity to be a full-time intern for Senator McCain in Washington DC and here in Phoenix, and it's an opportunity and experience that I will cherish for the rest of my life. Senator McCain is a man of impeccable character, and having the opportunity to intern under him solidified my views of his integrity. His drive to continue to serve the citizens of this city is evident through a couple of recent actions. He gave the city of Phoenix another opportunity to have the flight pass reviewed with the FAA, just when we thought all hope was lost. And, as some of you are aware, Senator McCain, ASU staff, and many community partners have come together to try to make a reality, reality, the redevelopment of the Rio Salado River, with the hopes of catalyzing community and economic development all across the city of Phoenix, just as Tempe Town Lake did for the city of Tempe. There is no public servant more deserving of this honor, and just as T3 will bear his name long after his service, his influence and character will be present in our communities for many years to come. And I would like to touch on his military record. He was on the USS Forrestal during the USS Forrestal fire. As his intern, I wrote many responses to veterans about that event, and many of those young men came together in a moment to save the lives of many people. We all know about his time in prisoner of war in Vietnam. We don't need to go there, but there's no question that his military record is sufficient, and I support, again, I support this item ninety-two. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Is anyone else here wishing to provide testimony for this city council on item ninety-two, the proposal to name Terminal Three at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport after Senator John McCain? All right, I appreciate that. The intent, for at least myself, in making this proposal was neither, you know, to talk or cast judgment on Senator McCain's voting record, one way or another, just like when the city of Phoenix did name Terminal Four after Senator Barry Goldwater. That was in honor of his service to the people of Arizona and to the United States of America. That was the intent here, to honor Senator McCain for his military service and for his thirty years of service as a senator representing Arizona as a presidential candidate, so service to the people of the country without regard to any particular vote on any particular item. At least that was my intent, was to honor his service to community and country. I'll turn it over to the members of the council. Do they have any comments on this item? Councilman Waring, almost called you Representative Waring, Councilman Waring, I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand every politician, every person on this planet has their detractors. But I would say this, Mayor Stanton mentioned Senator Goldwater. Not everybody agreed with him, and I don't know that we necessarily name things of this size and stature after individuals solely to honor the individual, but perhaps also broader ideas that they represent, I would say. In Senator Goldwater's case, I think Arizona's independent spirit, frontier spirit, his service to country, his long service was already mentioned. I think that is an important component of this, and that's what I would tell my children, as we go to the airport, you know, a little too young to totally process that, but, but that's what, who was Barry Goldwater, that's something that frankly, I would mention, and I would hope, because a lot of what we do is for younger people, and to inspire them to greater things. I would say that would be one thing I would mention to them, and hope that they would take that away, rather than just, he was a senator for a long time, and I'm a Republican, he's a Republican, so that's good. That, that's not the message that I would try to impart in that example. In this one, I would say I would point, and my children have met him numerous times, but again, probably too young to totally process what that means, you know, I guess I would say this, it's someone who fights, who has displayed courage, who has worked extremely hard and given everything he has in the service of his state and his country. It is not about the choices that were made necessarily. I don't agree with every one of them. I don't agree with my spouse about every single thing either. That's just the way life is. But it's someone who fought for what they thought was right, worked as hard as they could, put every ounce of energy into the effort, and tried to enjoy it. And that's what I would tell my kids someday, if this goes through and the signs are up at the airport. You know, I, I guess, I will just leave it at that, but that's something, you know, it's not so much about the individual and the specific things that they did, it's the broader ideas. Like, we name a lot of things after our founding fathers, and that's been much discussed recently. But I, I think overall, you look at the totality of what they left behind, I think it's been pretty good. So, I would say that. To Leonard Clark's idea, I agree with that about honoring Vietnam veterans. I think that would be right and appropriate. I don't know if this is a specific time to be discussing that, but perhaps on a separate motion, we do. We had two, at least two, I think two, on the agenda today, there were arts projects at the airport. And while I vote for some arts projects at the airport and vote against some, I had suggested one, Mayor, you may not even know where I talked to your chief of staff, that I thought might be appropriate for, for this terminal. Perhaps we can also incorporate this, to the extent it's possible to gather the names. I can tell you, my grandfather's name is on the roll of honor at the courthouse in Ottawa, Illinois for World War I, and that still is up, and I think that's right and appropriate. To honor those veterans, there is a monument at the site of the First Lincoln Douglas Debate in the same town that has the list of all the Civil War participants from Ottawa, Illinois. But Ottawa, Illinois is not the same size as Phoenix, so I recognize this could be a much bigger project. But to the extent it's possible, and with modern record-keeping, perhaps that it is, that is something I would like to see. Again, I don't know if we add that in today, but as a project going forward, I would suggest that that, that would be right and proper in this terminal. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Councilman, other members of the council, any comments on this item? Councilwoman Stark, please.
And I appreciate your comments, Councilman Waring. I know you know him personally, and I know you think highly of him. One of the things when I think about Senator McCain is, he represents Arizona, much like Goldwater did, that Arizona independent spirit, and I think that says a lot about him. And again, this is a process, we're going to go through it, but I think we should at least proceed with this, and let's, let's talk about it. But to me, Senator McCain, and I'm, I'm not a Republican, but Senator McCain still means a lot to me and to my family, and so I appreciate that we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments by members of the council? Councilman Noakowski, please.
So Mayor, just some clarification. This isn't, we're not voting to rename it today. We're just actually starting the process, like Councilmember Deborah Starks was explaining at the very beginning. So, we've gotten some calls from individuals talking about Virginia Piper, everything she's done within the city of Phoenix, that they would like to see it named after her. Other individuals have talked to us about Ed Pastor, with all his help with the airport, and also with the light rail and the sky train. So, there's still a chance for individuals to nominate other people, right, in this process?
I, I think the answer is, I guess, but, but let's be honest, in real politik, if we vote today in favor of this, I, I don't, I don't realistically see this being anything other than Terminal Three being named after Senator McCain.
But I mean, is there a chance for other people to actually nominate in front of this committee? I mean, we're not the final say. It's just a recommendation, right?
We are the final say. We're the Board of Directors of Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport, so the vote of the city council is the final say. I think as an administrative matter, it does have to go before a naming commission, but I also don't want to, you know, leave a false impression with the public that if we vote today to, with this item, Terminal Three will be named after Senator McCain. I think as, I think we'd be, we have to, we owe the public honesty, and I think that's, as an honest matter, this is a vote of the Board of Directors of the, of the airport to move forward with this. Mr. Manager, have you thoughts on that?
Mayor, the council has an approved process for naming facilities. What you're doing today is starting that process, which goes to the Heritage Commission, they have a hearing, and then they give you a recommendation one way or another, but to your point, the city council is the final authority on naming that building. It goes through a process and, but the council ultimately decides that name. There's a process where anybody can nominate people for different things. It goes through that Heritage Commission process, but this would be saying to the Heritage Commission, the John McCain Terminal, they would review it, and they would come to you with a recommendation, and then you make the decision.
I have a question for the city manager. So, let's say if an individual or a group of people want to nominate someone else for Terminal Three, at the same time, could they still do that?
I'm going to have to look to Michelle Dodds, because I'm not, I don't know every detail of the Heritage Commission process, but Michelle is the staff to the Heritage Commission.
Councilman Noakowski, members of the council, there is a formal process, there's an application, and there's a requirement that there be a sponsoring department. So, usually, something starts within a department in the city, or someone asks about the possibility, and then, you know, I discuss it with the city manager's office.
In this case, however, this would be, the Phoenix City Council would be the sponsor.
So, there's still a chance for some organizations that go to one of our departments and ask that, that Terminal Three be named something else?
Councilman Noakowski, as member of the council, I suppose that we have an active application for a specific name that would probably precede a secondary application?
And when is this committee meeting? When's the next?
The, they meet as needed, Councilman Noakowski, so they generally meet before the Historic Preservation Commission, and their next meeting is in December.
December?
I believe it's the eighteenth, but I want to just double-check. That's correct, December eighteenth.
And, and as a public body, that will be a legally noticed and open meeting to the public. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Williams, please.
I, I just have a question. I don't know if it's Michelle or you had, would, if there's a second request, does that still have to come to council? So?
Councilmember Williams, members of the, yes. It starts with the Historic Preservation, I mean, excuse me, the Heritage Commission, and then it moves to the city council subcommittee and then the full council.
Okay, so, if someone following Councilman Noakowski's thought submitted that, then it still has to come for us? Is it normal to submit two recommendations for the same building?
I think it would only come forward if the Historic Preservation, or, excuse me, the Heritage Commission recommends in favor, and then it would come to us. I think it's fair to say that this would be in the form of us directing them, you know, obviously it's a little bit awkward, but it gives us a sense of what the city council wants, if we vote in the affirmative today in favor of naming Terminal Three after Senator John McCain. So, I guess it would be theoretically possible that the Preservation Commission, excuse me, the Historic Name Commission would not follow the direction of the city council, but I think, I want to be honest with people, I don't think it's likely, and I think that, you know, this vote will be the, if, if there were five votes in the affirmative, we would move forward with naming Terminal Three after Senator John McCain.
And Mayor, council, yes. They make a recommendation to the council, and so they don't have, they're not the final decision-makers.
And Mayor, one last question.
Please.
Normally, I think it would normally go through the subcommittee first into the city council. So that's why I'm asking these questions. I would normally ask this at the subcommittee level. So it's not that I'm against the item, I just want to make sure that there's some clarifications, because we've had calls to our office asking, what is the process? And I just want to make sure that I know the process.
Yes. Councilman Noakowski, for the public, part of the process, it's, it starts with the Heritage Commission, goes on to the city council subcommittee, this is the downtown subcommittee, and, and then it, it moves on to the full council.
Thank you. I, when, when Terminal Four was named after Senator Barry Goldwater, it was initiated by the mayor and, and council, a very similar process that was proposed through this process.
Yes, Mayor, this process with the Heritage Commission, I believe it was May of nineteen ninety-nine that it was created.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments by members of this council? I'll just say, I'm, I'm really excited about this opportunity. Look, Terminal Three is going through almost a six-hundred-million-dollar renovation. When completed, it's going to be the most modern airport terminal in the United States of America. Significant operations from our airport are going to move over to Terminal Three, so we won't have, you'll have more balanced airport, so Terminal Four won't have, as they currently have, eighty percent of the activity at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport, so there's going to be a lot more attention on, on Terminal Three. And the opportunity for this council acting as the Board of Directors for Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport to name this after Senator John McCain, I think is a great opportunity. Someone who has served our country in so many ways, as an aviator, in the military, obviously as a supporter of the Navy, and having been elected five times, United States Senator, to represent this community, and of course, as a presidential candidate. I think it's very appropriate that we would take this opportunity, this unique opportunity that we have, to name what's going to be the best, one of the best terminals in the United States of America, after a great Arizona and a great American Senator John McCain. So I'll certainly be supportive of the motion made by Councilman Waring, and look forward to as swiftly as possible getting the name changed and official. And of course, we, the Senator is in all of our thoughts and prayers, as he's still battling brain cancer right now as we have this, have this vote. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any final comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Pastor. Mayor Stanton. Yes, so that item passes seven to zero. Was that the last item? There are no other items before this city council. Today's meeting is? We're not adjourned. Joanne Scott Woods has a citizen comment. It's the last one we have. I apologize. I thought we got all of them in. Okay. Ms. Woods.
Okay, I, I have to begin because the green light is on, and I.
It's your time. Go, go, go.
Okay. Good evening. The contents of a Happy Meal lay strewn across the threshold of the apartment door the next day. Remnants of evidence of a struggle that had suddenly spilled into Dana Klinger's apartment entryway the afternoon before, at the moment, when Phoenix Police Officer Mark Ryan and her boyfriend, Romaine Brisbane, tripped over his eighteen-month-old daughter, who had opened the door. He was ordered to the floor and laid there with his hands extended upward. Mother and child watched as Officer Ryan drew his weapon, shooting him in the center of the back, paralyzing him, and then again, along the side, causing catastrophic internal bleeding. "Why did you do that?" she screamed. A few moments before, Mr. Brisbane had just parked Miss Klinger's SUV in front of their apartment, removing the bags and drinks from McDonald's from the back vehicle. His friend, Bob Dickerson, was awaiting in the car while he took the short sidewalk path leading up to the apartment. Suddenly, Officer Ryan started running from the direction of a nearby dumpster. Mr. Dickerson watched him as. watched him as he began yelling for Mr. Brisbane, who was unknown to the officer at the time to stop and talk to him. Mr. Brisbane answered back that he was under no obligation to do so. Though his hands were full as he reached his residence, the officer became physically demanding. Hearing the resounding noise at the front door, the toddler opened it, knocking her over and still holding Mr. Brisbane's shoulder and left arm behind his back, Officer Ryan ordered him to the floor. Within seconds, he lay bleeding, pleading for him not to shoot him again, moaning, 'I'm dying.' Among the six beneficiaries of the settlement that included his mother and father as well as the mothers of his four children, Michael Chambers and their daughter, Ayana Rains, want what they've stated from the beginning: the appointment of an independent prosecutor and the assignment of an investigation to be standard in cases where police use of force results in serious injury or death. Perhaps if a civilian review board had been in place at the time in Miss Rains' father's death, Officer Ryan would no longer be on the force, reassigned to training officers." And I have copies, and also all the misconduct at the different phases of the incident. And these are documented through police, the police report, and the lawsuits, and the orders of operations that were in the 2009, 2014 officer-involved shooting review. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There'll be no other further comments and citizen comments. Our meeting's adjourned.